All right, stand by. Stand by. And ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, go.
Good evening and welcome to the Select Board meeting of April 19th, 2016. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll start with announcements. Any Select Board members have announcements tonight?
No.
No.
No, Tom? Ladies and gentlemen, we're short. Marie Angelides is under the weather tonight, and this is normally when Alex doesn't come to our meeting because his children are not at school and the school's shut down for the week. So, yes.
I just wanted to, you know, it's a couple of meetings up, but I do want to announce that, a reminder that town meeting is Tuesday, the 10th, at 7:00 PM in the high school gymnasium.
Okay, be so announced.
Yes, and to remind people that our long-range planning survey is available online at, through the town's website, there's a link on the front page. If you are not computer savvy or don't have access to the internet, the staff at the stores, library, and the adult center are prepared to assist folks with the survey and in filling it out. The key thing is that there are questions because of drop-down, because of the way the survey is constructed, the drop-down menus, you really can't do a paper copy effectively. We did look into that, and then the way to collect the data most efficiently as well is through the online survey. So, if you have an issue or you don't feel comfortable doing it, go to stores, library, or the adult center, or you can contact my office as well if you have trouble.
Okay, and the purpose of that survey, Stephen?
Is to really talk about two things. One, to get the community focused on our financial future, something we've talked about a lot through the budgeting process, but also get people's views on not only the value of services and the types of services that we currently offer, but also potential for development and changes to how our, to how our community presently exists. I think if, if money were no object, I think we would all prefer Long Meadow State just the way it is, but I think what we projected and articulated to the community is that that's probably not going to be the case, that we can either be proactive and make change or sit back and let change happen to us. And I think we're, we're trying to get people focused and also get their input in terms of what they want the community to look like in the future.
Okay, good, so you're taking the temperature of the community on, the out-years.
Yeah, it's a fairly lengthy survey, and that's why we're leaving it open until July 31st because we want a lot of people a lot of time to digest it and get through it, but it is an important community exercise.
Okay, and folks, if you didn't catch it, Stephen said, and I'll just repeat what he said, if you need assistance on this, it is a computer-based survey, but you can go to the stores, library, and they will help you do the survey.
Yes.
And you can also go to the seniors, out of the adult center.
Yeah, I mean, I'll be honest, I don't like filling out online surveys either, but it is, it is where modern data collection is, and because we developed the survey, we understand how important some of the choices are, and it's going to be great data and it's really going to help us, but it has to be done online. And so, like I said, if you have any concerns or don't have a computer at home or just aren't comfortable doing an online survey, reach out to town staff. We'll be more than willing to help you share your voice.
Great, appreciate you setting that up with the library and the seniors. That's, that's a good addition. Are any other announcements?
Well, I'd just like to say that there are a lot of people in town who have some great ideas, and this will give them a chance to share them with the leaders of town.
Okay, resident comments? Richard?
Richard Lyons, 608 Frank Smith Road, members of the Select Board, citizens of Long Meadow. I really don't want to be here making a statement, but I figure somebody has to. I've worked for, on different Select Boards over the years, and I've always considered that they work very hard, and I held them in esteem and respect.
Did I hear a but? Did I hear a but?
No.
No, okay.
No. But this Select Board went over and above that, and as a citizen of this town, I am very grateful that you people tried, and I'm using the word "tried" underlined, to put the future as part of it, instead of, you want it to be proactive instead of reactive that we have been for I don't know how many years. Through the budget process, I watched the nice people up here in the front agonize by having to take apart all the stuff that they put together for the future of this town to pay for what the school committee wanted to do to put in a full-day kindergarten. I don't have any problem with the school committee. They're supposed to be people that are taking care of what's needed for the children's education in this town, and I believe that all the people in the school committee are, believe that what they are doing is doing their purpose, but reality has to come into effect sometime. There's a saying about you can't have the tail wagging the dog. Well, school committee has to realize that they are part of the town, and the town does not exist simply to take care of what they think is necessary for the education of the children. I have pride in this town, and when I hear people say how great of an education the children get here, they deserve it, they're here for that, but you can't bankrupt the rest of the operation for that. It's, it's hard to put into words some of the things that are happening, but if you look at that tail, which is nice and fluffy, then you watch that old dog that's been here since 1767 going back and forth, you're going to notice that that dog has mange now because he's been disenfranchised and neglected. And if you have a veterinarian that you know, he can ask what the next thing after mange just happens with a dog that's neglected. I'm not going to say it, I know what it is because that's why I'm here today. You had areas where you were setting money aside for the future of this town. I'm sure most of the people out there remember going through our main roads where it was bumpy. They bumping up, well, most of those have been taken care of, but it's not just the town money, it was federal and state money that helped pay for that. I hear people say, "Oh, maybe we should put speed bumps in." Our whole road system was speed bumps, and that didn't stop the traffic. At the session that we had for the budget where we had people, citizens of the town, come in and make their comments, there was one parent that I knows what they were thinking when they'd say, "I've came here for my child because it was the best education in the area." But this woman finished, she said that we were moving here, we looked at the towns, we looked at the, could we afford the taxes, were the services adequate, was it a safe place to come, and she listed about three or four other things, and then she put in, and the final thing was that the schools, I can guarantee the people aren't going to move into this town, no matter how good the school system is, if their children can't play on their yards, can't walk the streets, and if there are drive-by shootings going on because nobody can do anything about it. Whether people realize that 91 is a great white highway, the number, much of narcotics that go down that road from New York up into New England is, oh, it's a main place for that source. The police are out there a lot, our police department is something that we have to be very happy about. If you look at the budget, they asked all the town departments to limit themselves to two and a half percent. Most of the departments went way under that. The police department did get more money because it was for the schools. They had to put in the system for the crossing guards, new, more crossing guards, and an operation to make sure they were properly set forth. Our fire department, who operates our ambulance service, were under. The chief had a marvelous plan where the people of the town would have been had a more effective ambulance service than the great one we have now. He wanted to make it so that they'd have a person dedicated for operating that to make sure we had everybody trained on a thing, and in about three years, it would have been self-sufficient, as I understand, and not costing the town anything. Mostly the equipment that, except for the trucks and stuff that they're using over there, it's they got grants, or they found money in this place or that place to pay for it. That's, those are great people. This town of Long Meadow, for their public safety, are very lucky compared to the other towns, and it's been recognized that we're the safest town in western Massachusetts. I think a lot of that has to do with the dedication of our police and fire department. You put in a call to them, you don't go on a waiting list, ask, saying that, "Oh, this person always called in, we'll get something else first, and then we'll get to it." They respond to every call that comes in as if it was a direct emergency to take care of the people of our town.
We realize that, Richard, but we have, I may need to shorten your help a little. We're under resident comments. The news is only about three minutes.
All right, I'll go on a little bit of thing. Let's look at what happened. What got to me the first, or best part of it, is the school committee suggesting ways that we could cut our budget to give them more money. At a meeting I had with the school committee and other members of the finance committee, which I am not speaking for, I'm speaking for myself, the question was, what happened that after two years of the school request to have all-day kindergarten was rejected by the town meeting? And the response was that, well, first off, we need that for MCAS, so they're ready for going into that. The MCAS are set up to help people and children that do not have the background or this education and stuff like that to get them all up to the same level. It's been excellence in education that we've had here in Massachusetts, in Long Meadow. And I asked the question, "Why are they going to the MCAS?" I was told, "Well, we're getting incentive funds for doing it." This does not look like an incentive funds if they have to go into our budget to do that, and by the end of this year, we may not have MCAS deadfall. Second thing was a member of this school committee said, "We're elected. We, this town should provide all money that we need for operating our budget. The town meeting doesn't mean anything, nobody ever goes to it." I didn't take the time to remind you that in the past, they've gone to the town meeting with their people, and they've overridden what wanted to happen. It seems that those Select Boards just have given up because they knew if the school wanted something, they'd just go to the town meeting. It's not their fault. Another question, one of the members of the school committee, who I have great respect for, made the statement that taking $50,000 out of the fund that they get by taking students from other towns into our system shouldn't be touched. That fund, I understand, is between $200,000 and $300,000 in it, and she did not want to take 50. She said it was fiscally unresponsible to do that. Well, if it's fiscally unresponsible for them to go into a flush fund for $50,000, it's fiscally unresponsible for the town itself to go into problems and take the money from necessary services. Basically, all I wanted to say, it's up to the people in this town to let the representatives know how they feel about it, and to attend the town meeting, and I thank you.
Okay, Richard, thank you. Any other resident comments? Okay, Richard, it's not too often anybody comes in and thanks us for the job we're doing, so we appreciate that, okay?
Keep up the good work, would you?
Okay, Select Board comments?
No, no.
Boy, you gotta easy down.
Well, I guess I should make one.
Okay, please.
You know, just, one of the things we're going to do this year that's a little different is just before the town meeting on the 10th, we're going to have a meeting for all the different people who are on boards and committees in town, sort of a recognition of all the work they do, because we'd really be in trouble if we had, if the Select Board and the town had to do all those things without their help, and we're going to have a little pizza party, and for people who are volunteering on boards and committees. So, I'm hoping people will make it, we're sending out invitations. Stephen is doing a lot of work on this as well as Deb, and what we're going to do is also have a poster session where each board or committee will describe just roughly what they've been working on and the members, and it'll just be a nice socialization thing before the town meeting, and so I'm hoping people will make it. I'll be making phone calls to the chairs of different boards and committees in town, so keep that in mind.
Okay, thank you, John. I'd like to remind everybody once again, our town meeting's May 10th. Arrive early, seating's going to be tight, a lot of issues going to be discussed that evening. Okay, adult center building committee, I see there's one little lady, Virginia. Why don't you come on up, please? You, you'd asked to be interviewed first so you could go to another appointment.
Yes, I am.
Ladies and gentlemen, what we're going to do, we're going to run through about 10 people on the, they're all applicants for the adult center task force, it's going to be studying the siting of the adult center and turn, then turn into a building committee and go all the way through, construction on this and dealing with the A and E's and the town manager and the whole ball of wax. So, first of all, why don't you introduce yourself and then tell us why you'd like to be on the committee?
My name is Virginia Ryder, and I'm at 22, or 20 Berkshire Lane in, obviously, Long Meadow, and I'm interested in being on the building committee to take a look at the various sites, take a look at what exists now, which I've been over to Greenwood Park at the senior center a number of times, and, and then look at the other possible sites to figure out what would be the best for our town, what would be the best for our seniors. And I think the process seems like an interesting process to see how it can move forward, so, as I said, it's a good fit for everybody. So, that's my primary reason in applying to be on this particular committee.
Okay, questions?
Yeah, I, my only question is, and it's more of a comment than a, than a question is, this, this is potentially a long-haul commitment, are you prepared for, for the long haul?
I'm here in town, I've been here quite a while, and I'm willing to commit myself. I know when I was listening to Mr. Foster saying all that it would entail, I'm going, "Oh, okay, but it sounds very interesting," so I would be fascinated and would look forward to being on the committee.
It will be interesting, believe me, because this, we don't often do it, that you go right onto your constructions, it'll be really interesting.
There's so many aspects to it, it appears, and I'm very pleased to hear that.
Yeah, this is just the first piece. Tom?
Well, have you been on other committees in town?
I'm on the recyc, I was actually here last year, on, for, on the recycling commission.
Okay, great.
Yeah, yeah.
And now, have you had, worked with contractors or anything like that?
Yes.
In the past, yeah?
Yes, yes, well, in my own house. I mean, I haven't worked for building schools or anything else in my own house, and my father was a builder, so I have, and an architect, so.
Were you an architect?
No, my, my father was.
Oh, husband's side, okay.
Yeah, I'm interested, yeah.
All right, well, great.
I noticed you retired, what was your profession?
Psychiatric nurse.
You fit right in.
I taught at AIC, psychiatric nursing, had a private practice, and then I also worked at the Curtis Blake Day School.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's an interesting dynamic, and your father was in, was an architect?
He was an architect, yeah.
Great, well, so you grew up with architectural renderings?
I did, yeah, and a hammer in my hand.
Did he build small stuff or big stuff?
More smaller things, not big buildings, except when he worked for Turner Construction.
Okay, great, well, we appreciate you putting, putting in for the committee. It's nice to see people come forward and want to serve, and you're already on the recycling commission, so you're already serving, so now you're going to double serve if we can get you on the committee.
That's right, that's right, I appreciate you also.
Do you have any questions from us?
No, you actually, you answered one, which is what the job would entail, and I appreciate you putting me in place right away to get this done.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Mary Beth?
Mary Beth Bergeron, 497 Inverness Lane, Long Meadow.
Okay, and by your application, you're a COA board member, you were on the COA task force, and it was by the, by the town manager. You've worked a lot with the development already of this project.
I have.
Until it converted into a, an official task force from the Select Board. Mark, you have any questions?
I have no questions at all.
Tom?
No, we've spoken several times, and I think you'd be a good, good member, so.
And you're very much aware that we're talking about the long haul?
I am.
Take it from here and go right onto your construction.
I am used to those types of projects.
Okay, great. I don't have any questions, because I, I know you so well, and I know what you're, you're doing here, it's just more of the same.
Richard? I mean, we do know her, I mean, I, for those who may be tuning in for the first time, it's worth mentioning that Mary Beth was the chair of the task force that had previously studied the issue, and that's the only reason why we know her that well.
Right, well, that's the only thing I left off, that you were the chair of the last task.
That is correct, right, that is correct.
Okay, do you have any questions for us?
I have no questions for you. I think you've made the task pretty clear, and I look forward to serving if you choose to select me.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Patricia?
My name is Patricia Burden, and I live at 678 Laurel Street in town.
And why don't you just go ahead and tell us a little bit of something about yourself, Patricia, and why you'd like to be part of this task force?
Well, I'd like to be part of something that I think is very important. I've lived here in town for 38 years, and I just recently retired, and some of the things that are going on right now are really things I have a little experience in, and I'd like to share some of those things with me, and I'd like to learn as I go along also. At any rate, I worked at Elms College for 25 years in development, and built several buildings as well as renovations, et cetera, and served on many of the, you know, tasks, task force as well as the design-build programs, and I, I am in for the long run, and I, you know, I would like to be involved, and I have experience in, in development, and I can identify places where I think there's funding and where, what the resources could be down the road, and it's something that's important to me. I think the fact that it was, I used to live in that neighborhood, if, if we choose the, the site on Turner Park, and I'm familiar with all of it, and I just think that this is something I'd like to do and be involved with.
Okay, so you've, you've previously served on similar task force then in your, in your professional life?
Oh, yes, I have, yes, thank you, yeah.
Okay, good, questions?
No, it sounds good, it's a good experience.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions either, I appreciate you sharing that information, because I didn't pull that quickly from your application that you had dealt with construction project or project development before. Of course, you've got a lot of, you know, gentlemen, I didn't read it.
I think what I've seen so far, I'm really I think what I've seen so far, I'm really impressed. Everybody has worked very hard here in town and, and anything that I can offer, actually, I think maybe I'll be learning more as I go along.
We all learn every day. Thank you very much for coming in tonight, Patricia. Oh, by the way, folks, uh, we'll let everybody know, likely in two weeks, we have a two-week period of time that we review the app. So at our next meeting, we'll be announcing who's been put on the task force. Okay?
Yep, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you. And then at that point, the task force will have their first meeting. They will go ahead and select the chair, maybe a vice chair, a recording secretary and get organized. And, uh, Stephen and I and, uh, Mary Beth will likely give all the information we can for what's happening up to this point. Uh, the main contact on this, this committee will be Marie Angelides. She is the select board representative of the council on aging and she's been part of the group. So she will be the, the main contact with the select board on this.
And I do believe that the report that was prepared by Dietz Associates, that was kind of the front end of this, is available on our website.
Okay. Okay, Timothy?
Good evening, Tim Coats, one four nine Pinewood Drive.
So why do you want to be on this, Tim?
Well, I've lived in Long Meadow, uh, for about thirty years. I've been involved in the design and construction of Glen Meadow as well as one other retirement community, so I have some experience in construction of, uh, senior industry buildings. And I thought it's something I could contribute in some small way back to the town.
You said some? You develop both of those? You have some experience?
I'm a humble man.
Okay, okay. Well, I hate to get you outsider. The owner knows what else you've done. Uh, do you have any questions for the board?
I do not.
Okay. Does the board have any questions for Tim?
I don't know if Tom has.
So, your profession was, what, before retirement?
I, I'm the president and CEO of Glen Meadow. I've been there for twenty-three years.
Oh, okay.
I, and I will be retiring in October.
On October, okay.
Do they know?
Now they do.
Okay. So we're going live here tonight?
Yes, if you're interested in applying, the position's open and we're, uh...
All right.
Okay, Mark?
Yeah, Tim, I, I guess my question to you is, is, you know, what do you know of the, the project and, and the involvement of, of the, you know, uh, so far of, of the town and in, in the development of the project? Have you?
I don't know a lot about it. I've been involved in some initial discussions a couple of years ago when they were doing some, uh, data gathering on needs for the commit, for the community, uh, for the senior center and I've, and what I've read through the, uh, town's website, but that's about it.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. And I'll remind you, Tim, in October, there's an awful lot of fine committees in town that could use your expertise, too, when, when you do retire. Uh, I don't have anything for you. Uh, I appreciate you coming forward. It's, uh, it's, it's nice to have people step up and want to serve in their community.
Okay.
And if I don't see you before then, I wish you the best on your retirement day, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Philip Hallahan.
My name is Phil Hallahan. I live at seventy-four Reaton Road. I've applied for this, uh, position, um, to utilize, I've been in the construction business for many, many years. I've had a, uh, building supply company. I've had a building company in which we build residential, commercial, industrial buildings. Uh, I've had a land development in which, uh, I've, uh, designed and built what I call safe and stable neighborhoods. And I've also been in the commercial real estate business. Uh, I feel I could, uh, help with the, uh, construction aspect of this. I've been a licensed construction supervisor by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts since its inception in, I'm gonna say nineteen seventy, up through twenty thirteen. I've been a fee inspector for HUD on certain programs that they've had. And I've also been a quality assurance, uh, manager for a modular home company that was over here in East Long Meadow in which we built homes throughout the United States. So, that's my background.
Okay, Phil, question?
Uh, have you been in any other committees or?
I, I'm a member of the, uh, senior center, the board of directors and the council of aging.
Okay, boy, so you're...
And you've had a lot of involvement in this project also?
Yes, I have.
Yeah, sense, senses and vision, so. Mark?
Yeah, I guess, uh, I guess my, Phil, your, your experience in construction is kind of something we were looking for that, uh, on, on this project. I think we need somebody who can look over what, what's being offered from a technical, and by that I mean construction point of view. And I think that's a, got, got, got a lot of value to the town. I guess my, my question to you i- is, you know, in terms of the time it takes, I, I'm thinking back to what a couple of our volunteers spent on the building, school building committee, in terms of overseeing. Now, this is a much bigger project than the, see, the adult center is envisioned to be. But, uh, do you see that as a, an overwhelming, uh, burden to place on somebody who may have the, the, the pri- primary construction experience on this committee?
No, not at all. I, I've been doing it all my life.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Phil, I don't, I don't have any questions. I, I've talked to you several times. I pretty well know where you're coming from, so.
Okay.
And as I say, I appreciate you coming forward and being willing to serve on the committee.
Okay.
And we'll make notification in two weeks at our next meeting.
Thank you very much.
Okay, have a nice evening.
Thank you for coming in.
Jan? Do you have Jan in tonight? Good evening.
I'm Jan Kamysko. I live at forty-six North Field Road. Um, I've lived in Long Meadow seventeen years. I haven't been involved in town, the town politics, but I'm interested in this, this, uh, this position. I feel there's, uh, as you might know, a dichotomy of interests in the town. Not antagonistic dichotomy, but there are two groups, definitely two, uh, well, kids, people with school-aged kids like myself and, uh, seniors, which is also, I'm, I'm in that category or almost. So, um, they each, we each have our own, not, not antagonistic, but our own interests or things that we would like to get done. Uh, I'd be interested in the, uh, being on the committee. I have, when I was at Westover Job Corps, I, doing purchasing, contract administration, inv- a lot of it involved bids, contracts for new, new construction there at Westover. Um, so I have some familiarity. Since that, since, since I left Job Corps, I've been mostly at home helping with my wife's business. She's a pediatrician. Um, I live, um, right near Turner Park, in fact, right next door to Mrs. Ryder, the first, the first interviewee. So I, I'd like to, um, I'd like to, 'cause I, 'cause I kind of have, uh, I see both, both issues, like people, like myself, with, with school-aged kids that, uh, were interested in, in maintaining the excellence of the schools. And, again, being sixty myself, I'm interested in the senior center project and willing to commit however long it takes to complete the project. Okay?
So, so you're in the neighborhood, I mean, do you get a sense from your neighbors that they'd be supportive of Turner Park, uh, project?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't really, two or three of the people are kind of new to the neighborhood, so I don't really, I haven't really gotten any kind of sense one way or another, you know, I see.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, it's, you're not, it's not uncommon. I, I think a lot of people, it's hard to just walk up and knock on your neighbor's door and ask him how things are going and what they think of the project, but, uh, I always encourage that. But, uh, all right, so good. So you're right in the area and, um...
Oh, yeah. Close as could be, yeah.
And so it sounds like you have time, you know, to, to put into this project and, uh, so I appreciate you stepping forward.
I don't have any other questions, I don't know.
Mark?
Yeah, I just, your, your application notes that you continue to do contract purchasing on behalf of, of Connecticut Valley Pedia?
Well, yeah, that, that's my wife's pediatric, pediatric, pediatric office. It's, uh, it's small. She's a sole practitioner. But I do, I do some of the, the, the small, you know, purchasing a little bit.
But when you were with, uh, I guess, Westover Job Corps, you were in purchasing, contract administration?
Yeah, that, that's primarily what I was doing, yeah.
Did any of that involve, uh, for lack of a better term, audits or reviews of, of contracts or any of activities such as that that might be helpful in what we may be doing?
Well, yeah, a lot, most of it was, well, a lot of it was day-to-day purchasing of common things. But some of it was, it did involve the more, you know, con- a little bit more sophisticated contracts. Like, for instance, building a, I remember one big one was building a new gym. So, so that involved a lot. I mean, the Department of Labor would come up with the contracts. I would review, uh, with, with them to, to make sure everything was, looked good, that sort of thing.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have any questions. I, I notice you do have a strong background on procurement. I see you were, you worked at Sikorsky and the naval procurement and...
Helicopters, right?
Yeah, helicopters and...
I wasn't in the Navy. I worked for the Navy.
Right, worked for the Navy.
Wasn't military.
Yeah, you were down Sikorsky, so.
Right, right, quite a few years there.
Do you have any questions for us?
Uh, no, I, I think it's, uh, pretty clear to me. Uh, thank you for...
And as I say, the committee will, uh, they're gonna be taking it from conception to ribbon cutting, so.
Right, right. That's, that sounds good to me.
Thank you very much for putting in.
Thank you.
And we'll make notification in two weeks.
Thank you for taking it.
Time, right.
Okay, thanks for coming in.
Tim? Oh, this, Tim is the one that's coming in later.
Tom McKenna?
Tim, uh, Tim? Tim McKenna?
I appear to be here, yes.
Yeah. Is that the one that was coming in later?
Yes.
Okay. Is that Tim?
Yes. That's him, yes.
Sit down if you'd like, Tim.
Come on down.
Pretty interesting.
Yeah. You staged that one pretty well.
I like that.
Now he doesn't know what the people before him said. Didn't answer any of the questions.
You don't get to let the cliff note.
Oh, dear.
What we've been doing is, uh, go ahead and introduce yourself and tell us why you'd like to be part of this, uh, adult center, uh, construction committee.
Uh, sure. My name is Tim McKenna. I live at one ninety-seven Farmington Road. Uh, I am a registered architect. I'm a certified project manager for construction and design. And, um, let me see, I've lived in Long Meadow. Well, my family's been here for almost a hundred years and my, uh, my, uh, I've, I've lived here since I was six months old, so it's quite a while. Better part of the last hundred years. And, um, so I just thought, I lived, uh, I went to architecture school, moved to Boston for thirty years, moved back home here to raise my family and decided to be, this, this might be a, a great way to, for me to, uh, kind of make a contribution back to the town.
Questions for the board?
So have you worked on other town groups, uh, committees or?
Uh, right now, I'm on the historic commission, but I have worked on the historic district commission.
Okay.
Let me see, uh, but, uh, no, oh, I know the other thing, too. My father was on the building committee for the Greenwood Park School back in the sixties. And, uh, recently, even though now I work with, uh, Yale New Haven Hospital down in New Haven, uh, for the last four years, I worked as a consultant to the Mass School Building Authority to, for a company that, we built, uh, I built the, um, the two tornado schools in Springfield, did a school in, um, Williamsburg, uh, and also just finished, uh, working on the, uh, renovations for the Chickaby, uh, the old Chickaby High School, turned that into a junior high school.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And you said you are protected by background? Yes, yep.
Any other questions? Mark?
Uh, no, I just want to thank you for stepping forward. I, I guess, you know, I, I just, because you did work in that, my comment is, uh, this project is likely to continue for some time, uh, in the future.
I hope I do, too.
That people are in it for the long haul. Obviously, you've been in this town or your family's been here for a while. So I think the next, uh, two or three years should not bother you, but I wanted you to hear.
Yep. I should, I should be around. I've got, got, uh, got somebody getting set to go to kindergarten, so she should keep me here for a while.
Okay, great. Thank you, Tom. Tim?
Yeah. I appreciate you putting in.
Oh, sure.
And I'm glad we could time it perfectly.
Yeah, thanks so much.
Thank you, Tim. What we failed to announce to everybody is all the successful applicants after they through this committee are automatically going to spend a three-year hitch on the select board. Just don't pay attention to paperwork when you sign, it's no problem. All right, let's see. Eleanor, or, excuse me, Jane?
Jim Russell.
Yeah, Jim Russell.
I'll, I'll defer to Eleanor.
Okay, Eleanor, come on up.
Eleanor Stoller, Meadow Road. I'm impressed. I am repressed. You have a good group here for a good committee, like you really care. But the reason I want to be on here, as you know, um, because I'm old.
You just got two demerits, you know? You just got two demerits.
Did I really? 'Cause I said I was do- impressed. I am impressed. You have, there, there's a lot of good people coming on.
Fantastic group of people.
Yes, there is. There is. I watch you all the time. I know what's going on. Anyway, besides that. Because, uh, the reason I want to be on is because I'm old. And because I'm old, I know what old people want and they need and how a building should be suitable for older people. Um, I've been in town more than fifty years and, of course, I'm the, a board, the council board. And, and that's the reason I'm interested, because I'm all for this. And, uh, yeah, I think they, we need something. But we have to do it, um, I don't know, what words do I need? We have to do it not skimping, but watch the finances, too. Let's not go...
I think they call it frugal.
Frugal, good word, good word. Yes, yes, okay. Anyway, that's the reason I am anxious. I've been, we've been, I've been on task force working on this for three years. We were supposed to have the shovel in the ground this year, remember, twenty-six?
I put one in the ground today.
Did you really? You didn't call me?
It was at the community gardens.
Anyway, and, and, you know, I've been in town a long time. I will always be here when I'm on top of the grass and even when I'm below the grass. And, um, anyway, that's, that was my interest in being on here.
Okay.
Mark, Eleanor, do you, do you have any, uh, look forward of what you'd like to bring to the committee once the, you know, the, the project is defined and now it's part of the implementation phase? You know, no matter where it's implemented or how it's implemented, I know you int- you indicated an interest in having input to, you know, what's in there and what, what's included. But, you know, what do you see yourself as adding during that implementation phase?
At, I, I want to add, um, I mean, now that I'm alone, I use the senior center more than I did before. And there's a lot of people out there that are sitting in their houses, and I think we have to add things to bring them in. Because, and then once the statistics show that all of the new senior centers, their attendance comes right up. And I think we need it in this town because there's a lot of seniors that are sitting home and, and they shouldn't be. They should be out there and having things that they want and they could tell. They like someplace to go in and have maybe coffee or soup or little lunchroom kind of thing. Um, just, I, I always said, there should be something they can come in in the morning for a coffee and, and a muffin or something, just to get them out of the house. And that's what I think we should be doing for seniors. I always felt that way. And I think something new would bring them out and have the interest and, uh, keep them busy. Like I say, I'm alone now. I'm in the senior center more than I was before, obviously. And I think that's important. And I think when it's comfortable inside, not when you want to use one of the restrooms and they're way out in East Cupcake somewhere. Got to make it easier for us, you know? You notice the body's falling apart, but the mouth works, you know? And that's the important...
I've got no more questions.
You gonna take a chance?
Well, no, I'm just gonna say, I know there's been a lot of fire in this committee with you in there, so, that'll be good, it will be. If there's something to be said, they'll, they'll just say, well, Eleanor, just step up and say it, so, that's always a good thing, so.
Okay.
I appreciate you putting in for the committee.
Thank you.
And you've, you've been part of the other committee and the, and the council on aging, and you haven't changed your views one bit in the last three years on this issue?
No.
And this issue is moving forward. There's been a lot... And this issue is moving forward, there's been a lot of steps that have already taken place, studies...
I know, I've been on, I was on, I went, I was not on the task force that the town manager had, but I went to every meeting.
Right, it's just not happening quite as quick as you'd like to see it, but a lot has been done.
Absolutely, let's move it.
Yeah, I know, we're doing it.
I know.
You're part of the movement tonight.
Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, Eleanor, thank you.
All right, bye.
Okay, James. I had to write that down too, Eleanor, you said that you want to be on the committee because you're old. It's a classy, classy state.
Jim Russell, 108 Bel Air Drive in Long Meadow. Good evening, members of the Board of Selectmen. I come here tonight wearing many hats. Having lived in towns with my late wife and my two children since nineteen sixty-four, served as a reserve police officer back in the early eighties. Currently retired from our one-hundred-and-three-year-old family pest control business. With this pest control business and doing a lot of termite control, we were involved with termite control at Westover Air Force Base, the weary housing authority. Ran into all types of construction, poured concrete, cinder block, cement block, brick, brick veneer, radiant heat, wiring in the floors, the heat slabs, ductwork in cement slabs with heat going through, and we dealt with an insidious insect who could work its way through a sixty-fourth of an inch crack and caused damage to homes. So from the standpoint of comments made that the board is looking for people with experience in construction, I enjoyed that element of the challenge of doing termite control for fifty years. I'm a trained arbor trader through the Better Business Bureau, and I can promise you, if I get appointed, I will keep the crowd in control, including Eleanor.
You're on tape, you realize that, don't you?
With all due respect, yes.
Okay.
I also wear the hat as chair of the Park and Recreation Commission, and we have a very vested interest as to the going forwards of the senior center, whether it be the existing senior center or whether it be a new one. I had the privilege and the pleasure of being appointed to the most recent task force. I totally enjoyed serving under Mary Beth Burgeon as chairperson. Appreciate it, the town manager allowing me to serve. I can look each and every one of you in the eye and say that I can clear the slate and not have any preconceived notions or ideas, but have an open mind as to, if appointed to the task force, to study everything from the beginning, and then after everything has been discussed and everyone's opinions have been listened to, make an informed decision. Obviously, Park and Rec would like to have a part and parcel in the development of programs at the senior center, we already have programs, daycare centers in the rear of the senior center. I feel I can be an objective person. My volunteerism speaks for itself, I am a three-year member on the Council on Aging Board of Directors. In nineteen seventy-three, the last four tennis courts, Ports Nine, Ten, and Eleven, Twelve, were constructed, and I was chairman of the Park Board Act then. Today, we've gone through three years of getting funds from CPC, and on the thirtieth of this month, we will dedicate twelve state-of-the-art, brand-new tennis courts in our new tennis complex. I'm retired, I have the experience, I have the desire, and have the fortitude to work whatever length of time it will take to complete this task. I thank you.
Okay, Jim, thank you. Questions?
I know Mr. Russell well, I have no questions.
Questions?
No, I just, I know you show up to a lot of different functions, and so I imagine you'll show up to all the meetings too, so, thank you.
Jim, I have no questions either, thank you for putting in, it'll be a couple of weeks before we make the finals.
Thank you.
And I believe we have one last, we have Fred? You can't imagine the confusion I had when I, I got the wrong application up, and I thought I had Jim Russell's up, and it was over here and it started about who your father-in-law was, and I said, that can't be, you know, it can't be, he can't be Jim Russell's father-in-law. Go ahead, introduce yourself and tell us why you'd like to be part of this committee.
Fred Vanderhoff, I live at twelve forty-one Williams Street here in Long Meadow. Very interested in your committee. My children are young in town, attend Blueberry Hill, and think that this project is, is a, is a great add to the town, it's near my home, they frequently use the park, they play on the ball fields, fish in the pond, enjoy it, but also can understand the importance of a senior center, and having something that's gonna stand out and be a gem for the town. Currently, I'm a contractor from Springfield, we, we're in the demolition business, I manage associated building wreckers. We deal with, on a daily basis, construction costs, scheduling, project management, we deal in asbestos abatement, PCBs, so we, we not only do complete building demolition projects, but we frequently work with colleges and universities to help them with their projects, whether it's a selective demolition or abatement project, they could go on for years, so we understand the lengthy process that you have and how you, managing this construction as it goes along is, is an endeavor. Before, associated, I was affiliated with a company out of New York State in commercial construction. I built the Home Depot in Chicopee, if anyone's been there, the Home Depot in Pittsfield, Hilton Garden Inn in Portland, Maine, Hilton Garden Inn Burlington, Vermont, and, again, dealt with those from start to finish. I currently hold a Massachusetts construction supervisor's license, and willing to take part.
Okay. Questions?
I don't have any questions, no, thank you.
Well, you certainly add a little diversity to the committee, I think, you know, with your age, so that might be a good thing, you know, and, and has, have you been on any, well, so, with these other groups, I mean, have you been with any community groups? I guess that's part of the, you know, the function.
Not directly. We very frequently, you know, are associated with historical committees, conservation committees, you know, anyone doing any type of demolition project or development project, you get involved with it, very much, usually the catalysts, starting in, especially if a building has to be demolished, you're dealing with conservation, you're dealing with historic, you're dealing with preservation and planning, often. But I, I am not on any other board, no.
Okay, but that's also important to have that kind of experience with this project, because it is a, it's, it's not really a park, but it's, you know, people are gonna want to conserve that, that space, because it's wooded, hopefully not too much, but it's on the edge.
Sure.
So, all right, well, now that's, I haven't, no other questions?
No, I don't have anything, Fred. I appreciate you stepping up, I don't know if your father-in-law twisted your arm or if you stood up a little.
Heard a lot about the project.
Okay.
Since the task force inception, it's, it sounds interesting, I think it'll be a lot of fun.
Good, okay, we'll, we'll let everybody know in two weeks.
Okay.
Thank you for showing up.
Thank you for your time.
Have we overlooked anybody out there that was here for an interview?
Are you interviewing for the Historic Commission also?
Uh, no. No, we don't have them on tonight.
I think May sixteenth might be the first date on that.
Okay. Any other questions before I go on? Okay.
I believe there's one more interview to take place on May second, another applicant?
I don't have it on my list, we got one more on May second?
Yeah, it's in the memo or...
Oh, maybe I missed it, okay. Oh, yeah, I see there is one, one for May second, okay, so we'll have the other interview on May second. Okay, we'll move on, town manager report.
Thanks, Richard. You have the report in the packet. One of the things that's not in there, and I just received an update earlier from, from DPW director Mario Mazza, the light at Edgewood and Long Meadow Street is out. If you remember the discussion about the traffic signal at Frank Smith and Williams and the age of the equipment and ordering it? Just press repeat, because it is essentially the same thing, old equipment getting wiped out and taking some time to get rebuilt. We will, if the stop signs that are on, most of our traffic signals aren't deployed, they will be, I think it's been relatively okay, it's not a high-volume intersection, it's not a high volume of traffic coming out of Edgewood, but if folks at home are wondering what's going on with it...
A lot of kids cross there, though, don't they?
Okay, but we do have a crossing guard there.
Okay.
Uh, well, and, and not this week, thank God.
Right, and that's a very active cross, I was surprised how active that is even during the day.
Well, we, the people who are on the west side of Long Meadow Street, we by and large tell them to, to go all the way up to that intersection, because it is a, the road width is narrow, so it's...
Right.
Further to path, further to walk, or less far to walk than if you're crossing, say, Converse and Long Meadow Street, but we also do have a crossing guard there, thanks, thank God, it's April vacation.
Yeah.
But just, it's an, an equipment issue, it's something we, obviously we've been looking at for a few years, I, I don't know if that intersection is, is a part of our casino mitigation design that we've been working on, but certainly we'll be looking to integrate it as much as possible.
Stephen, before you go on, can I just ask, you know, whether it's Frank Smith and Williams or this, when these get eventually replaced by our contractor, and I had said something last time about the contractor, are we upgrading it or are they replacing it in kind because they have to, because the mechanicals are so old? So if they're replacing it in kind, you know, what are we doing to improve the, you know, I mean, can we push them to, I mean, it's gonna happen again, it's just a matter of whether it happens next week or next month or three months from now, for them to go get sufficient materials so that, you know, replacement material, so it's not a, a multi-day even, but certainly multi-week replacement, and I'm not blaming the DPW, we contract the stuff. Yeah, why don't you come up so people can hear you, Mario?
I would tell you that I think you have to redesign the intersection to get the result you're hoping for.
No, I'm just hoping for the contractor to say, Long Meadow owns this nineteen fifties vintage material, we're gonna stock two or three replacement pieces.
Oh, I don't know that, yeah, special order.
So that when something goes bad in Long Meadow, we don't have to wait two weeks or three weeks to get it replaced.
I think if we were willing to front that and put them on our shelf, they would install them for us, I don't know that the contract would allow us to have them do that for, on our behalf.
Well, maybe, maybe, I don't know, Larry, I have no idea whether we have three different types or fifty-three different types, and I'm closer to fifty-three than three, but, but nevertheless, I mean, the ones on the poles seem to be the ones, you know, whether it's Frank Smith and Williams or, or, you know, those are the ones that are gonna get hit, because that, they're, they're sitting there for, for cars to hit, I'm just saying that this isn't new, this isn't something since you've been here, I mean, this has been going on for the last ten or fifteen years, that, that it takes a long time, we've just been lucky that, that they haven't been replaced, but I will tell you that on the intersection of Maple and Long Meadow Street, it was a couple of years ago that went out, and we actually installed, I, I, there was a second one for a while, and I think they ended up replacing them both, or they temporarily put a different kind in there until they could go back to the one we had. I'm just, you know, venting what people hear, is why does it take us so long to get this done, I, I don't have any answers, Stephen, at all.
I'll be honest with you, it's, it's twenty or thirty or more years of lack of investment and a stylistic preference for the old-school traffic signal posts versus the modern mast-arm equipment that is set further back from the intersection.
Right, but that, but that's not gonna change in, in the next couple of years, and you have...
Well, actually it will, that's one of the things we are trying to seek to change, but it's very reasonable.
In a few, in a few intersections, but my point is that, you know, if, pick a number, a five-thousand-dollar investment by the town will let us stock two or three different kinds, I don't know what the number is.
Twenty, might be a better number.
Well, then come forward and let us know what it is.
I think Mario is right in that if we wanted to buy the equipment upfront, but we don't have sufficient funds in our traffic signal budget, I think, to stock two or three
And if I could, their, the complexity changes based on intersection.
Right.
Turn lanes and, and how big, how modern to run intersection, so if you buy to it, there's no guarantee that the one that's broken is the one we have on a shelf that can, can run it, I just...
Right, I, I hear you.
And it's analog, it's analog equipment.
I understand, Stephen, and I just want you to sense my frustration, even to the point where, you know, is there another town in the region that does the same thing, and together we can, you know, get something done either through the contractor or share, whatever it is, I, I don't know what it is, it's just that traffic accidents happen and it seems to take sometimes a couple of weeks before we, we get these things in, and it's just, it's a safety issue, very honestly, and I don't know, I don't have any answer, all I'm saying is, my request to you is come to me with some suggestions, or come to the board with some suggestions, and, you know, if it's a million dollars, we're gonna say no, but if it's ten thousand dollars, you never know what we might say because of the, the safety impact of it.
Well, I wouldn't hit the safety too much, because they got four, they automatically goes four-way stops, so they're, it's a safer intersection, it's, it's an inconvenience, but it, just like they said, we're, we're dealing with lights thirty, forty years old, nobody's gonna stock parts for them, they're special order.
It's like waiting for the VCR repairman.
Yeah, they're special order.
Yeah, and, and I think, Mark, and I'm not trying to discount your comments, I think what I wanna, I think what I want to convey is that we completely agree with you.
Yep.
And if there was a better, faster, cheaper way for us to do it, I think we would all recommend it, because we don't want to be sitting here explaining to people why the light is out, and because it's embarrassing, it sounds, it sounds idiotic to be like, wow, we just can't get parts, it sounds like a mechanic giving you the runaround, we want to have much better answers than, than what we're giving you tonight, so, completely agree with what you're saying, I think, but there are reasons that, and, and the predominant reason is the age of our equipment, and this is, like I said, something that we identified three years ago as an issue when we were working on MGM, and it's something that when I started here, was made clear to me that one of our big kind of iceberg problems, if you will, was the age of our traffic signals, because it's, as soon as you start touching the stuff, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars per intersection, not ten thousand, and that, and that, especially when you get, you know, the one on Edgewood has a loop detector, so you come up, Edgewood triggers a light, and, and those are big money, and so I think it's, if there was an easy, cheap way to do it, we would.
Okay, all I'm saying is, don't be content just because the contractor says...
No, I...
Two weeks, if, you know, that's all.
Town managers report.
Okay. Just making a note here, okay. So, um, keeping with the streets theme, the Complete Streets policy bylaw that the town developed was submitted to a, I think, a smart growth, a national organization committed to smart growth, and I forget the exact title of it, but we did receive acknowledgement, it's not in my memo. I, I thought Marie would be here to crow about it, because, as we all know, the Complete Streets thing was kind of her, her, one of her signature achievements, and something she pushed really hard for, in fact, she, she's the one that submitted the bylaw for review by this organ, this smart growth organization, but they honored us by recognizing us as the third-best Complete Streets policy and/or bylaw in the country, which is a nice honor, and I think the board should really be grateful for the honor, because it was the select board that really developed and approved the, the bylaw. We are working on a press release that will include some of our plans from Converse Street that really show the implementation of the Complete Streets bylaw in our planning and design of a really major street project. And we're gonna hopefully get that release out in the next few days, we are also working on an RFP for the next phase of the Complete Streets process, which is a prioritization study, I, I believe we received a fifty-thousand-dollar grant, and we are in the running for I believe we received a fifty thousand dollar grant, and we are in the running for a grant of above fifty thousand dollars to fund a prioritization study. If we receive the grant, the RFP will be ready, and we'll use this press release to generate a lot of interest in working here at Long Meadow on our complete streets. So I wanna commend the board and Marie on the work on the bylaw and that recognition we received. All of the traffic consultants I've ever worked with, it's just a healthy number of all emailed me congratulating me, and I just, I can't figure out why. So speaking of Converse Street, you have in the packet, we'll talk about more there, but there is a, we are proposing a special town meeting, timed, same time as the young town meeting. We'll talk about that at the agenda item. One of the things we did today, the department heads and others involved in our emergency preparedness operation, we did have a two-hour training led by our emergency management director, who is Fire Chief John Dearborn. I think it was a great discussion. We are somewhat adjusting how we plan for emergencies and how we develop our training and implementation of emergency preparedness plans. I think it's a newer but simplified approach, and so I think that for the board's knowledge, we are, you know, this is something that goes on, on a recurring and ongoing basis, trying to find different ways to communicate. I think one of the big things was, we've had so much turnover at key emergency preparedness positions, not only police chief, fire chief, DPW director, but IT director is a big part of our emergency preparedness. He's new facilities, he's new town engineers, I mean, so we've had a lot of turnover at key positions, and so this session was really a kickoff, if you will, of what will be a, like I said, ongoing effort to integrate the new personnel into our existing efforts and find new ideas on how to be better prepared for emergencies. If you look at the Veterans Agent Report, the, our Veterans Five K is scheduled for November twelfth. Uh, it does say it has a rain date. I, we need to confirm, my belief is that the event is rain or shine, but I need to double check that, or snow, I suppose. I need to double check that, but right now it is November twelfth. It had been called the Long Meadow Wounded Warrior Five K, but given what we've learned about the Wounded Warrior Organization nationally, we, and this is something that the veteran circle has been talking about for a couple of years, changing affiliations in the race and finding more local charities to contribute the proceeds to, and it's, that's something we've started to do. We are working on a new brand, if you will, or a new name for the event, but for now it's the Long Meadow Veterans Five K. So save the date for November twelfth. So in, back to the written report, one of the things for the folks out there watching, if you, you're gonna be getting your warrant in the mail here on a Thursday, is it gonna be a reminder? Yeah, Thursday's reminder, the warrant will be in there. Uh, in the budget message, I did reference, the budget message in the warrant references not being able to maintain the Bliss Clay tennis courts. That was something that I had proposed to cut in the town manager's budget. The select board, when it prepared its budget, restored funding, which is, I think, the right decision, because it is a valued and heavily used community asset. Nevertheless, the reference to it did not get removed from the budget message, and that is, I note here that the annual tradition of having multiple people review the warrant multiple times, which we do every year, and we still end up with typos or cut and paste errors, and I deeply regret that. We give it to different people to look at, and it just, it's a somewhat complex document when you get into the wording, but for those at home, the funding for the tennis courts is in. And the number of school full-time employees, that was a column shifting issue, so that that number should really show a reduction in full-time employees from two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen. So we regret those errors, but I wanna make sure people are aware that they are in there. Uh, just a quick update on DPW committee, you know, it's interesting, we had the interviews for the, we had the interviews for the Adult Center Building Committee, and I think it's gonna be interesting to see them kind of go, now we're kind of going through the same process with the DPW committee. It's been interesting watching a new group of individuals go through the same learning process that the original task force did. I think it's, it's been beneficial in that it's really forced those folks who were originally involved to go back and refocus and rethink recommendations, approaches, discussions. And the DPW's been doing that. We've been reevaluating our site selection criteria. If there's one major shift that the committee has made, it has been to include privately, all privately held sites in the evaluation over a certain size. Working with Weston and Sampson and discussing with the DPW personnel, the operations, there is a minimum size, which is about four and a half acres, to be able to fit an operation, a facility that will effectively serve the community now and in the future. And so it's not only looking at either parcels that size or parcels that could be combined to that size, but also looking at ones that are currently privately held to really give us the most available options. So that work is ongoing. I think, Richard, you attend the meetings as well. I would say that everyone who's involved is taking it seriously and keeping an open mind, and I think that that's really the best we could hope for at this point, and we meet again, I think, next week, and like I said, the COA, the folks on the Adult Center Building Committee will probably go through the same process, but I think in the end it'll yield a better product that we can present to town meeting.
Stephen, can I just ask a quick question, and I don't mean to be sarcastic about this one. Your comment about looking at all four plus or appropriate-sized private lots, or then you said, or ones that can be combined. Can we assure people that we're not looking to take six random houses of three-quarters of an acre and say there's your, we're not looking at that kind of combined.
No, no, I think it's, and truthfully, we haven't, and I haven't discussed this with the engineers directly. There was a request from committee members, this, can you take a look at two or three sites that could be combined? That's not easy to do. I think there's a couple of sites kind of off the top of our head from our own community knowledge that you could maybe combine, but we haven't really figured out how we're gonna do that. Obviously, the ideal is a site that is greater than four and a half acres, that has either a willing private seller or is municipally owned. I mean, those are, that's where we kind of started. I think everyone can acknowledge that, sort of at a certain level, that that's preferable. But we received a strong message from the committee and the community that, you know, we wanted all options looked at. The option that the task force had recommended was not well thought of, and I think if there's one thing, and I don't mean to sound sarcastic about this, but if there's one thing that the, going through this whole process again, has kind of shown me, it's that, you know, we did talk about Wolf Swamp Field being the preferred site, and I think that that really was poorly articulated. It is, it is the least undesirable site of the options that we've reviewed, and I think that that's really what people need to bear in mind, is there really is not an ideal site for it in the community. If it was, it would already be standing on it, and that includes the site it currently exists on. And that's really the primary challenge that I think the committee, as the folk, these new folks are learning all the data and all of the constraints with the existing site, plus the limited availability of sites that would just fit a building that could serve the community on it, it really is a struggle to get to what is, nothing's gonna, I don't think any site's gonna emerge that everyone feels great about. It's just going to be, what is a site that is the, like I said, least undesirable site to do this? But I think everyone in the room understands how important the project is. There's a commitment to finding a way to develop a new DPW facility one way or the other, and that's a positive thing. But that's, you know, I think you're right, Mark. I mean, we're not looking to just throw a dart at a neighborhood and be like, yeah, that looks right. I think we're all, everyone understands that the context of the neighborhood, the surrounding environs are all important considerations. I just have a quick note about collective bargaining. I don't have a lot of detailed information to share. Obviously, reports on bargaining are executive session, and I don't have one for executive session either. Just a status update that we are in the process of bargaining with three units right now. We have two others that will start shortly. It's an exceptionally time-consuming task for folks who have been through it. So that's gonna be chewing up a lot of my time here in the next few months. So it's more of a status update that, obviously, these are important decisions. We talk about the importance of town employees and what they bring to the table day in, day out. This is a part of the process that is not fun, and I think everybody understands that we just have to try and reach an agreement that's fair and reasonable and get through it. But that's, it is time-consuming, and so it's more of an update on how my time will be spent here in the coming weeks. And then the last thing I just wanted to highlight, the signage bylaw. Alex isn't here unfortunately, so we could hear it firsthand, but we had talked about the signage bylaw. The Long Meadow Youth Baseball Association had presented a proposal to make a somewhat narrow amendment to our bylaw to allow them to do signage, to raise money. We did, not only did I refer the matter to town council, I referred the LYBA spokesperson, who is also an attorney, to town council. They interacted directly, really the overarching thing on that, and the reason why, we had kind of talked about having something potentially for a town meeting warrant. The reason why that didn't happen is, you know, Alex correctly identified a Supreme Court decision that struck down communities being able to use content as a means for regulating signage, and many, many other communities have been doing it for many years. So this is a pretty radical change in how signs are regulated. So to pass a bylaw with a narrow change for LYBA and then send our bylaw to the Attorney General, it's likely the entire bylaw would have been struck down, and then we would have been essentially on the clock, if you will, to make a correction to the entire chapter. I did spend time talking to town council about it. He is, Mike Callan, is working on it. There's a lot of, actually, there's a lot of town councils and city attorneys out there working on trying to develop a model that would pass muster with the Attorney General, because like I said, there's dozens, easily dozens of communities that are gonna be in the same boat as us. And once the Attorney General kind of endorses a model bylaw, that, along with the changes proposed by the sports leagues, would be brought back for the board's consideration. But that's, I just wanted to give you an update as to why that did not make it to the warrant. That was on advice of council.
Is there anything we can do, though? You know, the reason the baseball association came here, they were trying to get something for this season. Are we just, our hands are tied and said, sorry, there's no way we can accommodate?
I mean, it's been that way for many years, so it's not, I mean, it's just really status quo, and that's, I mean, it's not.
And I also pointed out that for many years, we put signs out on Strovel Field anyway, when my kids were little, so. And I'm not encouraging anybody to do that, but I'm just saying that.
It's unfortunate, and like I said, I think Mike Callan did spend a lot of time, he felt like it was in the town's, he was protecting the town's interests by not moving forward with this for really reasons that have absolutely nothing to do with baseball signage or fundraising. I think all of us, I won't speak for all of us, I'll speak for myself. I support what they're trying to do. I think it should have been expanded to all leagues, all fields, and let's really, because we talk all the time about the lack of revenue in the future. If this is something where the sports leagues can generate revenue and make contributions to the town to offset our costs, this is all the types of things we're gonna need to do. But I also understood from Alex's comments, and they were affirmed by Mike Callan, that we were really setting ourselves up for a bigger problem by going forward at this time. Like I said, I would expect, I hate to say within a year, but I would expect that this issue on the signage bylaw, given the Supreme Court decision, will resolve itself relatively quickly, because like I said, there are many communities struggling with it, and there are a few in our region who are working on draft bylaws. I think we're, you know, there's one or two towns that are gonna be the frontrunners. Not, you know, thirty towns aren't gonna submit thirty different bylaws, only to have the Attorney General kind of tear them all apart. I think this is kind of an agreement, an unspoken agreement, to let one or two towns run lead on it and then build a bylaw of what the feedback we get from the AG's offices.
And so, but it's saying that we can't really funnel money towards any one specific sport? Is that what it would be? So money would have to go into?
To be able to put up the signs, there's a provision of our sign bylaw that says you cannot put signs up on town fields or town facilities, or, I forget the exact language. But that's a small part of a larger bylaw. And the larger part of that chapter of our bylaws talks about essentially political campaign signage and content-based signage. So if we sent the bylaw to the Attorney General's office with that minor change that LYBA was looking for, and they looked at the whole bylaw, they would see that our entire bylaw is not compliant with what is now case law for the country.
Right, because of the content.
Because of the content and the Supreme Court decision, so they would probably kick us, kick our entire bylaw back to us and say, you gotta change it now, and then we'd be under some, you know, mandate to do that at a pace that we're, we'd rather not do it, because I think we wanna see how the process plays out in other communities.
All right, so this is something that really needs to be updated.
It needs to be updated regardless. I mean, Alex, something Alex touched on, he had written an article in the newspaper about it. The bylaw needed to be updated no matter what. It's just the timing with the LYBA was somewhat unfortunate. If they'd come in before the Supreme Court decision, it'd have been fine. But they came in and the, something above.
Six months is too late.
Well, not too, I mean, it's, it's just that, it's just that poor timing beyond their control, quite honestly.
All right.
So we wanna see it resolved quickly. Like I said, I support the goal of raising, allowing the leagues to raise money, and as soon as we can make a break on this thing, we will.
Thank you.
I think that's about it for me.
Stephen, I had some questions on the Converse redevelopment. Do you wanna hold that for the?
Yeah, we'll do the agenda item.
Yeah, we'll do it at the other one.
Okay.
Want to just go with consent agenda?
Yeah.
I'll move the consent agenda, which is a street closure for Center Street Schools' September carnival.
I'll second.
Planning in advance.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor? There is no discussion on consent agenda. Okay.
All right.
Approve the minutes? They get a motion to approve the April fourth?
Yeah, I'm gonna, we approve the April fourth minutes, subject to one clarification, and I'll go through.
I'll second.
Okay.
Stephen.
No, it's all right. Give me a second.
I'd sent this to Debbie, but in the subcommittee reports, I just wanted to add that a clarification that says PVTA must be ninety-five percent on time, and what I would add is, for ADA paratransit rides, but no such requirement is in place for dial-a-ride services, and I sent that to Debbie so that she has that, just to clarify with that ninety-five percent.
Okay, so minutes as modified by Mark, all in favor? No one disapproved, no one exchanged. Okay, let's see, we got a one-day liquor license. We had a motion for a one-day liquor license.
I'll move, we approve the one-day liquor license for Saint Mary's for.
Volunteer Appreciation Day.
Volunteer Appreciation Day for May eighteenth, two thousand sixteen, subject to the, any approvals of the police department.
I'll second that.
Okay, and it looks like it's been signed off by the police department, and should be ready to go.
That really, that really is a good way to show appreciation for your volunteers.
Yes, yes, for this, it's better than we do, yeah.
Yeah, well, we can't have alcohol in the school, right?
It's at the church.
It's at the church.
Oh, no, I know it, but I mean, our appreciation is gonna be.
Oh, yeah, I was talking, the library and the COA and several other groups have their own volunteer appreciation events, and I don't think we do.
Well, library could get a liquor license.
They could.
Yeah, they could. There's something to work on for next year. Okay, all in favor? All vote, okay.
We got a warrant, warrant for special town meeting. Stephen, you wanna take that one?
Yeah, so I have been talking about this for a few meetings, because I had suspected something like this was coming. The two issues that we have talked about are completely unrelated, but joined together here for the purposes of the special town meeting. One, we knew was coming from, I think since January, when we had a meeting with Mass DOT about our Converse Street project. When we realized that we were behind in our preparation for, of our right-of-way plans for the Converse, again, Converse Street's a two-point-seven million dollar project funded by the state. Converse Street is one of our most important roadways. It's, it's a reconstruction project which will really make great improvements to the road for many years to come. So it was really a big deal. When Mass DOT met with us, they felt, they put us on a timeline, and they said, if you can't meet the timeline, they were going to essentially pull your funding and you'll have to reapply. So obviously, that was something that we took very seriously. Really, a lot of it had to do with, again, turnover at the DPW. With the new folks who came in, I wanna commend Mario and his team for coming in and really making Converse Street one of the top priorities. Our new town engineer, Andy Carr, has also taken this on as a top priority, and I think we have now caught up to, and really I think gotten past where Mass DOT thought we would be in terms of having our plans and specifications and our right-of-way plan ready for the project. And if, maybe for the folks at home, right-of-way plan is the plan of acquisitions that the town will need to, property acquisitions that the town will need to do to complete the project. In the world of road construction, that. Uh, in the world of road construction, that takes a few different forms, it can be permanent easement, it can be a temporary easement. Uh, permanent easement, permanent easement meaning the town will forever have the rights to that section of your property. Um, permanent easement, or temporary easement means for the duration of the construction, we will need to be on your property. And then there is a fee, in-fee acquisition, which means we are just buying the land outright. Um, for the purposes of this right-of-way plan for Congress Street, all that is required are temporary easements. Um, so just the right for the, for the town to go onto people's property, mostly relates to sidewalk installations, like if you can, we build this, the, the edge of sidewalk is at the edge of the right-of-way line, that's one of the reasons, one of the ways you know where the town's rights or right-of-way ends.
Okay.
But if you're, you build sidewalk from two sides, so there are gonna be people walking on private property to construct, to set the, the, um, forms and things like that for the sidewalks. So that's what most of this is. Um, the reason why we're asking for a special town meeting, for the Select Board to call a special town meeting, is we knew in advance that the appraisal and appraisal review timelines and the right-of-way plan approval timeline were not gonna match up with our, um, annual town meeting, traditional warrant publishing deadlines. Um, if we could have gotten them on that timeline, they would have been, um, part of the warrant discussion, but we knew we couldn't, and that's why I've been kind of prepping the board in advance for this. Uh, as you can see, it's thirty-seven residents, so thirty, about thirty-seven temporary easements. When you think of the length of Congress Street and the number of properties that front it, that really isn't all that many. And, um, it's about twenty thousand, almost twenty-one thousand dollars in, um, temporary easement payments, again, given the scope of the project, that, that is not all that significant. But a town meeting vote is required to, to, to get those easements. Um, the funds will be from Chapter Ninety, uh, that is an allowable fund, a funding source. So that's why we're asking for a special town meeting for that first article, the second article-
Before you go on, can we just discuss that one?
Sure.
Richard, just-
Sure.
Okay, I, I guess my question, I, I have a bunch of questions about this, Stephen, but why is it a, a town appropriation since it's, it's Chapter Ninety money? So we're, you know, uh, you know, we've got an, uh, on the main town meeting warrant, we have a, a warrant to accept Chapter Ninety money. My sense is we could, because it says, or other, you know, or other comments thereto, or whatever it is, we could amend that, and, and I don't, I don't even know if we've got that amount of money, in fact, figured finalized, but we could, we could finalize that, but more importantly, it's not raise and appropriate money, it's coming, it's a, it's literally passed through the, from, from state funds. So I guess my question is, why are we appropriating Chapter Ninety money outside of what we already do anyway, and why can't we just do it in the regular town meeting?
The acquisition of the, of the interest in the property, the acquisition of temporary easements, no matter how you fund it, requires a town meeting vote. So the town meeting vote is tied to the instrument of acquiring temporary easements, not the funding source. This is something we had an internal discussion, we did get confirmation from town council. No matter, if you were funding it with coupons, um, you would still need a town meeting vote to do it.
Okay, so, so the town meeting isn't the money, the town meeting is to approve the town seeking temporary easements.
Correct.
So, a, a, a couple of questions come from that. So, we've done other projects, I, I will tell you that, that, uh, the Meadowbrook, the, you know, sewer, or downfall project, there's one near me and my, that, we're, we were seeking additional easements through, I mean, somebody came to me with, sign this and you get, we get a temporary easement, it wasn't done through, through town meeting, so why does this require the town meeting and those that don't, number one, and this, I guess the second one is, and, and one that mostly concerns me, it, it sounds like we're appropriating an amount of money here, but is this not a, here's, here's the offer. I mean, we're not negotiating the, the, the potential payment for these easements, it's, uh, you know, we have the right to do these if it's voted by the town. Essentially, you were taking the, the temporary easement by eminent domain or something like that, and this is a payment to ease your, ease your pain, kinda thing.
Fair market value based on appraisal.
And it's, I assume it's so much per linear foot as opposed to-
No, it's, it's, every, every easement has its own individual appraisal.
Right.
And, and that was the appraisals that were done independently that-
Done independently, and it's not an assessed value or a back of the envelope, it's a specific appraisal, they're very detailed. Plus they get reviewed by an appraisal reviewer.
But, but people aren't, no, I'm, I'm holding out for more?
No.
I, I mean, that, that-
They may do that, but that doesn't stop the process.
Uh, uh, okay, and that one-
And they can sue the town, Mark, I mean, the bottom line is, they can sue the town for more money, but we're still gonna get the temporary easement.
Right, but I guess my biggest concern is that this temporary easement appears to require a vote of town meeting, and yet I've seen two or three others go through temporary easements that didn't require a vote of town meeting, and somebody, one of them's wrong.
So, well, I, not necessarily. There are different strategies you can employ to do this. Sometimes you can do it via access agreement, sometimes you can do it via, um, you know, mutual agreement of some other description. Um, because the project is state-funded, we are adhering to federal standards in terms of right-of-way acquisition. So even if this was, say, a hundred percent town-funded, and we were in between a window where a special town meeting really wasn't feasible, we could negotiate an access agreement that is, that looks on paper exactly like a temporary easement, except it doesn't get recorded at the, at the registry of deeds, but it contains all the other same language, and we negotiate that party to party. Um, the federal government and the state, really, it's because it's federal funding, the state, Mass DOT, won't accept an agreement like that to cover something like this. There's a, Richard knows, there's a handbook, an inch thick easily, that covers just right-of-way, um, governance for federal and state-funded projects. And so we're following this heavily regulatory playbook that is a different level of, um, documentation and, and, um, really bureaucracy, and I don't mean that in a negative way, but it's a lot more bureaucratic than what our normal process is. So you're right, it is different, but I wouldn't say it's wrong, it's just a different standard than what we, than what we would do if it was a local-
It's part of their process, this project will not go forward.
Yeah, 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 and, and by the way, if we don't do it, they won't give us the money. That's, that's the bottom line.
It's a mandatory process for them.
That's fine, I, I, you know, I, my final comment would be then that, uh, the explanation below that article, I think oughta clearly state issues such as this is state and federal money that is not town-appropriated money, you know, that, that, in, in the explanation, and I think it oughta in, indicate that the, it's required for the, you know, it says the temporary easements are needed to mitigate potential trespass issues, but in fact, temporary easements are, are, are required by, whether it's the state or the federal, federal process, and I think that needs to be included in there, because I suspect other people are gonna have the same questions I, I do. My sense is that people who live along this, this area are gonna have questions, and, 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 you know, I don't know to what extent we can say, look, you know, the, we're talking about an easement that is two feet, six feet, twelve feet beyond whatever it is temporarily, and we're gonna refix it up and all that kinda stuff, as opposed to generally, we want easements, I mean, we need people to come vote for this, and my experience has been that, you know, five people from the neighborhood who get wind of this and come to the special town meeting could really sully this for all of us, if it's not-
They already know about this.
Right, so they all received-
These letters certified-
Yeah, they're fully in the pocket on this.
Many of which have called us.
Well, Richard, I gotta tell you, I, I-
Well, you don't live on Converse.
I understand that, and also, I was reading the thing that I didn't meet with people, as it said, the chair of the Select Board did.
Yours was different, though.
No, no, I, no, no, I'm, I'm this project.
Okay.
Well, I think-
My, my point is, you're right, I don't-
I hear what you're saying, I think what you're doing, though, is you're kind of speculating on what did or didn't happen versus asking us, and then, and therefore planting seeds of doubt into people who have no idea what's going on. The people who live along Converse Street or impacted by this know exactly what's going on, and that's the most important thing. So to kind of say, we did or didn't do this, or did we, we, we may or may not have done this, and kind of put us in a position of defensiveness before we even have a special town meeting called, i- is-
Fine.
You know, you're, you're kinda putting us on our back feet, on, on our, about our heels when-
But the request is to have the entire town vote for this, not just the people on Converse Street who know about it.
Right, but that, that's, that, that is our requi, it's our requi, it's a requirement.
It's a requirement.
Town meeting, as a legislative branch, right.
So we need to explain it sufficiently for everybody in town to understand what's going on.
And, and I, I think, I think we are, but the people on Converse Street are impacted by this, in fact, they, they are allowed to donate their easements, and, and I think, and this is my first time here in Long Mido doing this, but a lot of townspeople rather than get the check and then potentially have a, uh, get taxed on, a lot of them, donate it back and take the write-off, uh, because it's kind of a hassle for a small amount of money, um, to go through the whole process. So we may get some easements donated by the end of it, this is just really a legal process that has to take place, um, to keep the project moving forward.
Right, I mean, the average is gonna be, I'm guessing, seven or eight hundred, seven hundred and fifty bucks, kinda.
And, and we get plenty of complaints about-
Well, it's thirty-seven divided by twenty thousand.
The bigger properties get more.
Yeah. And, and I can tell you this, the people who complain about Converse Street and the condition it's in don't only live on Converse Street, and this is something that will really make big improvements to that road, and that's, I, I think if there's one sales tagline at town meeting, it's, if you hate Converse Street, vote for this. Uh, because that, it really is, we, we couldn't afford to do this on our own.
No, and this, this is, this is evidence that the TIP program's working, if we put our projects in and wait for two, three years, and we get-
And again, I, I think, you know, I think it's, it's important to recognize that we would have all liked to have done this in a normal way versus the special town meeting conflagration. But, um, we weren't fully aware where the right-of-way plan stood, there was some turnover. Um, but I, again, I think we brought it really from the, from the brink of cancellation to a point where now I think Mass Highway is gonna be trying to keep up with us moving forward, so it, it's a, it's a great turnaround on this project.
And so we're looking at a date in June for this?
This construction?
Special town meeting?
No, no, it's part of-
No, no, it's the same night.
It's part of our upcoming-
Within our town meeting, and we'll have to discuss it, within our town meeting, we, we suspend the town, you know, historically, Tom, we have suspended, we've done this twice, I think, that I've been, you suspend the town meeting and call to order a special town meeting, complete this, this warrant, and then adjourn the special town meeting and go back to your original town meeting. It's up to, essentially, it's up to the moderator what point that happens in the, in the regular town meeting.
Oh, so that's on-
And I'm discussing this with the moderator.
You're not calling people, you're, you're literally adding two warrants to the article.
That, that's one of the reasons why this is valuable, is because there's no additional cost for advertising, setup, breakdown, all that other stuff. And I think the key thing is, it's about six weeks out to finalize warrant articles like this from the annual town meeting. But the Select Board can call a town meeting, a special town meeting, with two weeks' notice. And so because we are a little more than two weeks out from the annual town meeting, um, we can still do this tonight. And again, it's, it's, it's a, it's a funny thing, but it's only because of the timing of the appraisal work and everything else.
No, 'cause that makes sense, 'cause I know that we took, said motions from the floor are entertained, and I was thinking, if we can entertain this, this would be a separate-
You can't, you can't entertain motions that are published.
Yeah, yeah, but this is-
No, not to the warrant, I mean, but-
Yeah, this has to be published.
Other stuff.
Um, any other questions on Converse Street?
No, why don't you go to your number two?
Okay, so, um, I talked about this, I think, at the last meeting. Um, I think I informed the board that this was potentially coming as well. Uh, we did present the information about the library's, uh, uh, ramp and stairs project that we had, had reported to the board. You saw the memo from, uh, from Mario about the cost overruns, or, or, sorry, not cost overruns, that the bids were, um, far in excess of what was budgeted. Uh, I did not go, but I, Mario did present the findings to the Community Preservation Act. They did, um, vote to allocate an additional hundred and five thousand dollars to the project. Um, again, CPA funding requires town meeting vote. They did this last week, so we are including, uh, this warrant article, because the town meeting had already, had already endorsed the project. Um, it was funded by the CPA the first time, they have, uh, decided it's important enough to give additional funds. And, um, this is one that we really want to, um, see take place and get hopefully, uh, completed before, um, the next winter cycle.
And when would this project be done if it's approved at the town meeting?
If, this is approved, uh, because this isn't, uh, because I think these are coming, the funds are coming out of reserves, we can sign the contract on May eleventh. So we've gone out to bid, we've got a contractor identified, the bids are good for sixty days. I think we only got them in two weeks ago.
Something like that.
Um, so we are well within the time to be able to sign the contract for the base bid work, um, the day after town meeting, 'cause like I said, I believe these are-
I mean, this could be done this summer or this-
Sure, I, we would work with Karen to figure out the best time for her to do it.
There's no perfect timing.
Yeah, this is undesigned fund balance, Mark.
Fair point.
So it's not, it's not July one money, so our intent is, sign the contract and go, as soon as we, I mean-
But was the prior money, but, but the prior money may not have been, but the road paving is July one money, isn't it?
Correct, no, 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 the road paving is all, the, all the other funds FY sixteen.
The library road.
No, that money was-
Well, those were last year's money, oh, okay.
It's FY sixteen money, this additional undesigned fund balance is undesigned fund balance.
Of course you-
This is a year late.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we're gonna get it done, and that's all that matters.
We're gonna get, so we, this is, this doesn't have to wait till the summer, it's already bid, we have a contract identified, we'll go May, we'll be out, we'll at least have a contract signed. We are gonna work with the library, um, board and the library, uh, management team to make sure that, because it's, it's gonna be, it's a very important project, and I think people are focused on getting it done. It is a hugely disruptive project to library operations, and, um, we need to be sensitive to that. We have done a lot of, uh, we've had a lot of discussions about pre-planning, um, but until we had a timeline nailed down, it was hard to kind of say, here's how we're gonna handle certain situations. Um, but I, I expect those, I expect the mitigation plans for the library operations to be nailed down fairly quickly.
So, will we have to put in some sort of special ramp for another door, so people will be able to get in?
The front door.
Yeah.
We'll have to build a, a temporary ramp.
Temporary ramp, okay.
That's the front, front door.
The very front faces, uh, five.
Yeah. On the front lawn, essentially, one of the things we've looked at was converting the front yard into a temporary driveway and temporary parking, potentially, we haven't really sorted out whether we wanna do parking there or keep the parking in the back.
Yeah.
Um, you know, that, that's one of the things we, and like I think I said last time, um, you know, Karen was out for a significant amount of time, so we didn't have a chance to nail things down with her, and her department's been really shorthanded, um, with o- other absences and turnover, so now that she's back, we'll, I, as I said, I expect we'll be out there moving very quickly.
Do you need to vote for approval on this?
We need to vote to call a special town meeting.
Got a motion? Yeah, I'll move that the Select Board, uh, call a special town meeting for Tuesday, May tenth, two thousand sixteen, at a time between seven and ten PM, to be determined by the town moderator.
I'll second it. Okay, any other discussion?
Do we, do we adopt this warrant for that town meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe I'll make the same motion, I'd like to amend that motion to, to include, and we adopt the warrant proposed for two articles, one on the, uh, Chapter Ninety money for easements on Converse Street, and the second article for CPA, additional CPA funds for the library stuff.
Okay, I appreciate your efforts, Stephen, your efforts, and, and the CPA folks for getting together and being able to respond to this pretty quickly. This is very important, move this project forward. And it's very important, we found that little glitch on the Converse one, too, so we get it taken care of, so that thing can continue rolling. We don't want that to drop off the radar screen.
It's a huge important part.
Once it drops off, it's hard to get it back on.
Did I say aloud already that I have been in contact with the moderator about the subject, and so she is also forewarned that this is coming?
Yeah, and she will, she will be for the board, I think, next meeting-
Correct.
Talk about the warrant.
But I've been warning her that this could be coming too, so it should be as seamless as it can be.
Is there anything else that you could throw at her for her first meeting?
I'm working on it.
I mean, I-
We're trying.
I think everybody's working on this one.
Do we need to close this warrant or anything like that?
We're gonna, we're gonna vote on it.
This, once you vote on it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Now, we do not need to open, 'cause this is its own warrant, so we, uh, wanna vote to close this?
No, it's done.
This is its own special town meeting. But, but it's a warrant, and this warrant was opened, we all voted it, or we, did we vote to close it?
We don't have to close it, it's a special town meeting.
I wouldn't see why, but it's okay. It's a warrant.
Right, that's what I, this thing on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, oh, that was warrant time, we'll go on the irrigation thing, aren't we? Okay, we've got, we've got something, I'm gonna just lightly read to you guys, for the people out in the Hitherland. We've talked several years back and forth about irrigation meters in our town of Long Mido, or the way to, to separate irrigation and sewage charges. Currently, we, we bill sewage and water from the same meter, so if you use ten units of water, you build ten units of sewage. And when you get into that, uh, process of way we've been doing it, that, there's, there's inadequacies on both sides of the fence, and we've, it's been before the board before to talk about putting in secondary irrigation meters, and they do work well, but they're very expensive, there's a lot of maintenance, there's backflow preventers, we had a proposal a couple of years ago, it's gonna be very expensive to have these put in. Plus the fact it only hits the people that really want to put that meter in, the other residents don't get touched. Uh, several communities across America, especially in the northern tier states, uh, use another proposal, and I'm gonna read about this, and then we'll, we'll have any questions around. It's that for many years, we've heard, uh, it continues- And I'm gonna read about this, and then we'll, we'll have any questions around. It's that for many years, we've heard, uh, the continued call for fairness on how we, uh, assess charges for water and sewage. Current practice is quite simple. We charge our residents sewage fees for every gallon of water registered on their water meters. This method, albeit simple, is not the least bit fair for consumers who choose to have, uh, pools, irrigation systems, gardens, or, or have large needs of potable water, which will never return to the sanitary sewer system. Currently, we bill separately for water and sewage based on the needs of two systems, which com- uh, comprise what we call potable water and sanitary sewer enterprise funds. We have the capacity for determining how many gallons of water we are purchasing from Springfield, how many gallons of water are being delivered, uh, to each resident and business, how many gallons of sewage and gray water are being sent to Bodie Island, uh, as, as a town. But we do not have the means to determine how much sewage and gray water is being generated from each residence and business in our community for a variety of reasons. It's impractical to measure sewage flow from residents, residents and businesses. Water, our, our water is purchased from the city of Springfield, distributed to our restaurants, our, our residents. We have three cost-related elements which are combined to make up our water rate. Cost of purchasing the water from Springfield, the cost of labor, supplies and materials used to maintain our own system on a daily basis, and, and the cost for long-term maintenance and upkeep on our water system. Our water rates are established to offset these charges and to keep a reserve fund for emergencies. Sewage, sanitary sewage and gray water flows from each resident and business in our community to our sewage pumping station located on Pondside Road, which is pumped across the river on its way to, to Bondi Island. For our sanitary sewer, the same three categories of charges are used to establish sewer, sewage rates, except we pay Springfield to process our sewage, which is metered and treated at Bodie Island. Establishing sewer rates, essentially, there are three different methods used across the country for billing sanitary sewage usage. For the majority of residential and commercial users of these sanitary sewage systems, meters are not used to measure sewage flow. The cost and upkeep of sewage metering devices is very high as opposed to water metering. Large commercial customers may have a sewage flow meter, but residential, I, I don't think I've ever seen it. It's, it's cost prohibitive. Single meters, um, yeah, the most common method, let's see, I, I lost my step in here. Establishing sewer rates, essentially, there are three different across the country for billing sanitary sewage usage. For the majority of residents, commercial users, sanitary systems are not used to measure flow. You notice I just read the same sentence? Okay, the three most common methods for metering are single meter. Meter, uh, users are billed for sewage based on the water usage on a year-round basis. That's currently what we employ in the town of Longmont. If you use fifteen units of water, you're billed for fifteen units of water and fifteen units of sewage. There is an upper limit, I believe, what is it, two hundred, where we peak out? Uh, winter averaging, this, this process is used more in the northern tier states and not in the southern tier states, which would apply to us. There are many, many, many communities across America that bill this way, and I've, I've lived in a couple of them myself. Municipalities take water meter readings during the winter months to establish a baseline sewage usage. Being the fact is, from usually December through January, February, March, you use no irrigation water. You're not washing your vehicles, you're not sprinkling the yard, you're not watering the garden. So the communities will average that flow for those three or four or five month period, and that becomes your base sewage charge for the entire year. Many areas across the country, and especially in the northern tier states, the majority of water used during these three, uh, during the winter months, December through March, is deposited into the sanitary system for processing. Accordingly, they use this as a baseline sewage charge for the rema- remember, rema- re- uh, remainder of the year.
It's easy for you to say.
Huh?
It's easy for you to say.
It was very easy for me to say. And any, any water usage above these levels is billed for water usage only. The average consumption rate is reset each year based on the water meter readings during the winter season. Commercial users are not included in this method as their usage of water is predominantly for sewage and gray water. In many municipalities, commercial, uh, customers have a dedicated water meter for irrigation and other water usage that doesn't result in sewage or gray water generation. You can have dual meters. Except for commercial customers, this practice is not widely used above the southern tier states where irrigation and outdoor, uh, usage of water on a year-round basis is not frequent. With a current single meter system of billing, our water consumption is subsidizing our sewage rates. Instead of our sewage rates being established based on the actual u- usage, it is being established on the use, on, on our water usage, but a considerable amount of such water is never deposited into the sanitary system. The problem we face is not determining how much water we use, it's determining how much of that water flowed into the sanitary system and, and how to establish an equitable charge for such services. And I say I prefer taking the KISS approach, which is keep it simple, stupid approach to solving problems. Most systems work best if they are simple rather than being complicated. Therefore, simplicity should be the key role in the design, and unnecessary complexity should be avoided. Our existing system is simple, but it's not a fair system where heavy water users are subsidizing sewage rates for lower-usage customers. There are other ways of appropriately charging customers for heavy water usage, uh, such as demand-based surcharges or by having tiered rate structures for high-water usage. Then I wanted to talk about the pros and the cons of single meter and winter averaging. There are several, several factors that come into it. Basically, what I was saying, we can, I think we can accomplish the goal of having every community be set up for a, a winter rate and a summer rate on sewage. It's within our, it's within our abilities. We have remote reading now on our meters. We can read our meters, what, a day and a half, is it, or one day?
Two days.
Yeah, two days, we can read the meters. So we're no longer where we used to have to go through the community, and it took us all week. It's all electronic now. We have equipment that's set up to do this. Other communities are doing this. It's a matter of us determining what's best for our community. I will tell you, there are some pitfalls. They have to be worked out. Right now, my mo- I have very, very moderate usage of water at my residence. I think if this thing is still working up here, I can show you. This is the water usage I have at my residence. Oh, it didn't cast up. Let me see if I can cast it up. Airplay. It's giving one minute, a little technical difficulties here, folks.
There you go.
There it goes.
Okay.
You go ahead.
Okay. This is over a four-year period of time. I read my meter every month on the same day of the month. Uh, I've done this for years. It's not just to prove a point, because you never know when you're going to develop something wrong at your home. And if I read my meter every month, I can tell if I've got something that's leaking or it's gone crazy on me. You can see I would average, if I took the bumps out of the top, I'm gonna average about three units. Now, I, I understand there's people out there saying, what are you even talking about? I use a hundred and fifty units, and I realize that. But my wife and I do not use that much water. And our average sewage consumption-wise should be somewhere as around three units. The couple of peaks that you see in August and July and September is when I have used some irrigation water, and I've only did it a couple of years. I actually only did it one year. So you can see the massive impact it had just on one year of using it. I understand, it's fairly simple, the people out there have got a hundred and fifty units or two hundred units. You take the same chart and apply it to any household that is occupied on a twelve-month basis in our community. During the month of November, December, January and February, March, you're going to use a rate of flow that is what they considered a, a, a base rate for winter usage, because that's when you're gonna stop doing all the external watering. And that's where you set your sewage charge at. The problem that we've got in front of us is we would have to, if we move into a system, we're gonna have to adjust a lot of rate systems, because right now, we are supplementing, uh, sewage charges, tremendously subsidizing. Because you figure, the, the Department of DPW knows how much it takes to maintain the sewage, uh, system, and they know how much we're paying Springfield to process the sewage. We also know how much it's costing us to maintain our water system and how much we're getting in from that. Basically, we're kind of putting those two together, and we made up a rate that is for our water usage only. So consequently, if you started actually billing people just for their water usage, sewage usage prices are going to go up. Other communities have, have dealt with this issue because they go into tiered rates for water. So you actually charge your water customers more money for water to equalize your billing. It's not meant to penalize anybody. It's meant in the middle of the summer, if I wanna use a lot of water, why should I have to pay sewage charges? Uh, we have five thousand residents. I don't know how many would have a sprinkler system and then pools and all, but I, I think you check your bill. You'll, if you go back in in November and take a look at November, it's kinda hard, 'cause we bill a quarter or, uh, semiannually? Semiannually. So you're, you're unaware of what you're using in the winter right now. I'm not. I know exactly what I'm using. As a matter of fact, I read the meter on the eleventh of every month. Comes up on the calendar. And I know exactly what I'm using. So all of the water above that three line, it could just about assure you is irrigation, uh, garden water and et cetera, not sewage use. Very stable household, which many of you have too. You'll see yours go down as the children go off to school too. So we've had this discussion before, and I wanted to bring it back and throw it on the table once more because there are relatively easy ways to fix this longstanding problem without the in- without the introduction of more infrastructure and dual metering in your basement and backflow preventers that are changed or checked every year. This is not required. I mean, you're, you've got a sprinkler system, you've got a backflow preventer on your home right now. Uh, you've got one meter, and the only thing we have to do is figure out how much of the water are you using for irrigation and how much are you using for sewage? And it's within our, it's within our capabilities to do that now as we moved up. And our capabilities are even getting better, because I guess you're talking maybe two years, we're going Wi-Fi. So i- it's possible in a couple of years, we could be updating daily to a remote terminal of, we, it's all being taken behind the scenes. So what I actually was proposed is not an action by the board. What I'm, what I was recommending is that we put this out and make up a task force, if we choose, to, to go back and really study this issue. And especially look at the rate structure. That's where the time is gonna have to be spent in figuring out, how are we gonna adjust the rate schedule? Because the sewage charges and the water charges, ladies and gentlemen, they're on the, they're already on the bulletin board. We know how much they cost. Now we have to do is look at our usage, and if we start to balance this back and forth, is what are the rates gonna do? How, what are you, are we gonna do a tiered water rate on water usage so that when you get on up, you really hit a, a different tier level? You're gonna pay more for your water, but you're basically, your sewage is gonna be down at another level. Uh, I thought about it a lot. A lot of communities are going through this. It, it's, it's not that, I mean, I, you go on the internet, there's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of communities who use the winter monitoring or averaging. It's a very well-accepted method. One hundred percent based on the fact, it's almost impossible to measure sewage coming out of a residential capacity because of the metering equipment would be, be so expensive. I mean, this, at the big companies, they use big veer, weers and all that, and it works pretty good. But to get down to residential application, I, I'll be honest with you, if you don't do winter, winter averaging, you just might as well stick with what you got, 'cause there is no other way to bill water and sewage at a residential capacity. With available technology, it's just not out there.
Okay, now, Richard.
Yeah.
So if we determine, um, how folks from our town are, are, you know, water that they consume isn't going into the sewage system, does that mean that, you know, our, the bill we have to pay to Bondi's Island, does that go down?
No, that stays the same.
The bill, the, the amount the town pays to Bondi's Island isn't gonna change. What's going to change is how much particularly small water users pay for their sewer portion, Tom.
Okay, so it's gonna help those folks.
So individuals, the town's gonna pay, and I don't remember what the name, number was, but let's say it's three million dollars a year at Bondi's Island. Town's gonna continue to pay that.
Our sewer to Bondi's is metered.
Is metered, our sewer, but, but individual, it, it comes down to the individuals. I don't, I'll, I got a few things I want to comment on.
Yeah, go ahead, Mark.
You, you also, Tom?
Uh, I think that was my main question. But the other side is, I think that it is a, um, you know, the question would then be, how do we make sure that we have enough money to cover any sewer repairs, you know, as long as that's on?
The sewer rates will adjust, and they'll adjust up. There's no doubt.
Oh.
I mean, you know, we have to co- collect enough, here, here's the way it's done, Tom, is we take the total cost of our sewer, of our sewer bill from Springfield, add in our cost of maintaining sewers, which is the town's labor and other things.
Okay.
And divide it by whatever the divisor is, which in this case is water usage.
Okay, yeah.
That's gonna, the formula stays the same.
Alright.
The presumption is the water usage number will go down, because we're no gonna, no, no longer gonna be dividing it by water that's actually going into the, somebody's sprinkler system.
Sure.
And so the water use system goes down, and therefore, the rate per water we charge will go up.
Okay.
It, it's, it, it almost has to, but we, no, it depends. What we find out is, how much is our two hundred, two hundred unit cap effective? You know, for somebody like Richard, he never hits the two hundred unit cap. So he's paying for all that water that he's putting into the ground, he's paying sewer fees on it. He's not gonna pay sewer fees on that anymore. So that sewer income from him is lost. It's gotta be made up by somebody else. That's the easiest way to think of it.
Okay.
I'm about fifty kids in my household away from hitting that two hundred cap.
Alright, right. Well, Richard, I, I, I appreciate what you've, you've thought, your thought process here, and, and my comments, you know, I, I didn't give a lot of thought to this, but, you know, I, I've been a, a, a strong supporter for quite a while of, of reform of our waters, water metering system. And unfortunately, we now have, uh, bylaws that prevent that. At our last town meeting, that, a bylaw that allowed us, that would've allowed us to consider alternate ways of charging for water, usage was defeated. In my, in my way of thinking, it was defeated for the wrong reasons with, uh, incorrect advice, but that's a, a diff- different comment. My, my concern with, with this system that you're proposing is several, but it can be summed up mostly by the, uh, two words, snowbirds. The town has a lot of snowbirds.
Yeah, it's been taken care of.
If you go away the month of December and January, your water usage goes way down.
You're omitted from the system. If you don't have water usage, you're out of the system.
Well, if you don't have twelve months, you have water usage.
We do have a minimum charge.
Yeah, you're totally advised.
But the, the point is though, Richard, you don't know that, because we're not reading it.
If you're going from your house, your, your water usage should be zero for that month.
It's not gonna be zero, 'cause I have an odd, a flow meter for, for, uh, humidifier. But the point is that, that you're not looking, if I'm gone for three weeks, you don't see it, because we're reading it over a six-month period. And all you'll see is a low-
That's just, that's just three weeks, though. This, this is measured over a four to five month period.
But what you'll see is, uh, uh, but if I'm not gone those three weeks in the summer, you know, let's just take a six-month period, okay? Twenty-four weeks, okay? If I'm gone three weeks, I'm using water twenty-one weeks.
Which, which part of the year are you going?
In December, in, in the winter. If I'm gone, let's say I'm gone five weeks, or six weeks in the winter. You're seeing a water usage that's artificially low relative to from there, that equivalent time in the summertime.
Yeah, well, we're gonna average four and five months together, and we're gonna catch you every year. So unless you're gone every year for that month, yeah, you could slip by. They're, I mean, they're using across, they've gone through all these things across America. They figured it out.
I don't, I don't at all, what you're saying here is you take November, December, January and February,
Uh-huh.
and you look at the average of those numbers, right?
Right, right.
Okay, if December's down here, you're not looking at each month separately. The town doesn't read it, you're gonna look at the sum of those four months.
Right.
And it's gonna be lower, because you've got no usage or very little usage in December.
I can't help it that you take off one, two or three weeks.
But what I'm saying is that that person, those people aren't paying their fair share come the summertime, because in the summertime, we're gonna presume-
I think that could be worked on. You could work that out. I mean, you could, you could figure out a way to look at, you know, of-
I, I think you're wrong. I think you're wrong.
Mark, this is news across the country. This is not something new.
We're talking about a nine-month period.
And, and, and I'm saying, the easiest way to do it is to tell people who wanna, wanna, uh, to, to exempt their irrigation waters, to put in a second meter.
But that's, that's a ridiculous extra charge. This way, let's, let's take it one more leap. This way, DPW also starts to get a very good idea of what part of all these flows are taking place each month going out of the system for rainwater infiltration and everything else. This is a troubleshooting thing that starts to, to nail back in.
But then, then, then what you're talking about is creating a, 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 a high-intensity water monitoring system that looks not only town-wide, but user in specific on a monthly basis.
You, you can, yeah.
Well, who's gonna actually-
Why wouldn't you read the meters monthly, Mark?
Resources.
That's not resources. It takes one and a half days. We can read them, we can read them in what we used to-
Now, what are we gonna, but what are you gonna do with the data?
You put a million-dollar meters in.
Well, what are you gonna do with the data? Who's gonna look at the data?
We could not store the data and start researching what we're doing in the town for water infiltration during the storms and everything else. We, I have some simple questions-
It's one thing to store the data, it's another thing, Richard, altogether, to have somebody analyzing the data on fifty-two hundred or fifty-three hundred customers.
You're not, you're doing the averaging. You're doing, you're looking at the big picture, Mark.
You can't have it both ways. You can't look at the averages and the big pictures and look at the individuals who are not using any water. You know, I mean, I, my argument has been all along that, you know, houses that close down, we have properties in this town where nobody lives in. They use no water, and yet we can retain a, a water hookup to that house.
And they have a billing on.
No, they don't.
But, 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 Mark, there's statistical packages that are doing this.
Wait, 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 wait a second. There's no minimum charge. The minimum charge is-
There's a minimum charge on sewer, isn't there?
Yeah, not on the water.
But they still get him, they still get him bill, a six-month bill.
Right, but-
For the minimum charge of sewer, 'cause the water, as you know, as you just referenced, can only be billed in accordance with consumption.
Right.
But the sewer can have a minimum charge and- But the sewer can have a minimum charge, and we do have a minimum charge on our sewer.
Yes, we do.
We do.
And I'm aware we do, right. But my point is.
And I'm saying it's the same bill, so no matter who it is, that house is getting a bill every six months whether they use water or not.
But they're, right, but they're getting a sewer bill, quote unquote, which money goes into our sewer fund and not into our water fund, which allows us to maintain the infrastructure of the water system per house that may not be using water. But that's a different question. The question here is, how do we try to become more equitable to people who use water for irrigation? That's the question, you know, and I just can't imagine a more equitable system than saying, if you object to the excess sewer charge for your irrigation, put in a separate meter and demonstrate what you use for irrigation.
Why don't we talk about that just a second? You brought up a point. I think the proposal we had, it was something like what, five hundred dollars for the installation? And the meter was two hundred, and then it was a seventy-five dollar annual fee to inspect a backflip preventer. I don't know how you call that equitable to anyone.
First of all, the inspection fee is subject to our approval.
There's another meter.
Right, and, Richard, you've got to, I mean, you can't expect this thing to pay for itself in the first six months or the first season.
Why would you do that to people?
You would do that to people because it's the only, because you measure it. You don't estimate.
You measure, Mark.
No, yours is an estimate, and you're extrapolating.
You've got to get into the eighteenth, you've got to get out of the eighteenth century now, believe me.
Hey, don't in the eighteenth century me. You're extrapolating, Richard. You're extrapolating six months to a year, and I'm measuring. We fundamentally disagree, Richard. We fundamentally disagree. You're extrapolating.
I don't care what you agree and what you disagree with.
We fundamentally disagree.
This is being utilized in such cities like Houston, Texas. Not Long Mattle, Massachusetts, with five thousand customers.
Where they don't have snowbirds, where they don't have different.
Just get on the internet, do some research.
Where they don't have a difference in people between summer and winter, number of times loads they do the wash.
They have everything that you have mentioned and more, Mark. They've taken, they've already got it figured out how it works.
One option, if I may, is, and it doesn't accomplish what either of you want to do, is adjusting the cap. This is something I've heard the finance director talk about. Adjust the two hundred unit cap, lower, essentially. It doesn't help the low-volume users.
No, no, it doesn't.
But it does help, if you want to relieve cost or pressure on low-volume users, that's one school of thought. There's some approaches you could use. If you want to not assess sewer charges on irrigation users, that's a different concept. And I think that's part of the disconnect here is it's two different structures to get to for two different goals. But I think the original point though is, it's like literally a water balloon. If you squeeze one side of it, it's going to get pushed into another side.
The discussion has always been do fair metering for water usage.
For irrigation usage.
For irrigation usage. That has always been the discussion. And there are communities in the northern tier have figured out how to do this very simply. We've got a metering system now that you can read in one and a half days. Two years from now, it'll be Wi-Fi. It'll be wired right down there. You'll be monitored daily what's happening. I mean, we have got it here. The fact of going ahead and putting, and the fact is, once you do it, you cover every single home in this community. That's another thing. Every single home is covered. All you have to do is read the meters and do winter averaging, every home. Or the other one, you've got to set up and have installations done at every single home that wants that meter put in.
But do we need to change our bylaw to do that? Do we need to go back to town meeting again and try and get that bylaw changed that says?
Oh, yeah.
No, you don't.
For the winter averaging?
For winter averaging you do. Well, no, because that has to do with sewer fees. That has nothing to do with water rates.
So, winter averaging for just the sewer side?
Well, in winter averaging, you change your amount of water.
That's such a basic sewage fee for the year. In other words, my sewage fees, you can see, is no water there.
So, we're talking about the sewer fees and rate, not the water rate?
Yeah, my sewage rate should be capped right at three.
We're not suggesting people get water for free.
Yeah.
We're suggesting they not pay for sewer when they're not putting water down the sewers. I mean, I understand, that's right, Richard. That's what you're saying. The question is, how much are they putting, you know, what percentage of the water that goes through their meter actually goes down the sewers? And I got to tell you, I fundamentally disagree that we can extrapolate from four months to a year, that we can, you know, I agree, Stephen, to a large extent, the two hundred unit cap is an arbitrary number. I don't know that there was a basis for that number. And maybe the better way to do it is pick five houses or twenty-five houses or fifty houses in town and actually look at the difference. Maybe at the town's expense, the town look at that.
All right, so can I just make a comment?
Tell me somebody who's been home all year round.
Okay, what does that chart really tell you? It tells you that this is irrigation, doesn't it?
No.
It doesn't?
I don't know.
Why wouldn't it? How can I not have these spikes in these months? When I don't take showers? Come on, Mark, think.
I don't know. Maybe you do more loads of laundry.
This is the middle of the winter. This is not irrigation. This is the summer. There's your irrigation.
I mean, maybe you're away in January.
Well, maybe I could do anything, but you could take any home. This is four years' worth of data, Mark.
Fine, but we don't have that on anybody's home beside yours. That's fine.
There's communities in America have been doing this for years and years and years.
So, what I'm saying, let's gather that kind of data on more homes than one.
We don't even need it here. We want to talk about a system because I don't have a dog in the fight. I just don't want to see us spend five or six hundred dollars per resident.
We wouldn't pay them. We wouldn't pay a dime.
And they're going to save fifty dollars a year. I know, they would pay. They're going to advance pay.
So, can I make a comment here, right?
Sure.
Because I think that you're asking for a task force, and they'll work out the bugs in this debate here. Because I believe, you know, there are statistical packages, there are ways to crunch these numbers for, you know, a whole community and come up accurately. I mean, you could be surprised. You might even be able to just randomly select, you know, three months that are not part of the summer months and really to have a good picture about what people are doing, that it's so close through random selection, that it's going to be there.
Our last water usage billing task force is still being waved in front of us as a disaster. I don't have to agree with that. But it's still being used against the town and prevent, that's what was argued against letting us change the billing system last year. So, our water task force have not had a very good track record, let me put it that way.
Maybe we got the wrong people on the committee. Have you ever been and worked in a community that had the?
Second meters?
Second meters or the winter monitoring?
No, that was the first time I saw that. That's interesting concept.
Well, it's more the concept. It's used.
Well, it's a new concept to me, but the city of Springfield has the second meter.
Is it a subtractive meter or is it just a separate meter?
It's subtracted from your whole.
Okay, so there's a main meter and then it branches off.
Right, and they subtract that just for your sewer. They reduce that from your sewer.
Right, because they're different systems. There are additive meters, there's parallel meters and subtractive meters, okay. And it works, and it works.
I'm not saying it doesn't work, but I think that could work too.
Why you don't think, how can you believe major metropolitan areas would use a system that don't work?
Because I believe it's an approximation and an extrapolation as opposed to measurement.
I believe you need to go on the internet and do some research.
But, Richard, how can you say that a system that in any way extrapolates or estimates?
My God, you're talking, we've got a one-meter system.
Is better than a system?
Can you talk to me and say, can you even talk to me in common sense? We've got a one-meter system, and we're billing sewage and water, and you're talking about me going to extrapolate on some data points? On what average winter usage is, what sewage rate should be?
No, you're presuming that readings that you get in the winter would have been the same readings in the summer.
Absolutely. For the sewage, for sanitary sewage, I am absolutely stating that as a fact.
Okay, and I'm saying that if you can measure it instead of assume it, why don't you measure it? That's what I'm saying.
No, I think we do measure it. We have an accurate way of measuring. No.
We don't measure it.
That's what they said very clearly. They said the metering system is very accurate. There's no guesswork. We know exactly how much water people use, and so what we need to do is find an accurate way to gather that data so that it reflects what Richard has.
Measure the amount of water people use that goes in the ground instead of in the sewer. That's all I'm saying. Measure that amount of water.
Well, we can't measure that. That's not accurate.
Of course you can. What do you mean you can't measure that?
Because that's, they just, he just said.
You'd have to have a meter in every single household in our town.
Only those who want it. You put in a meter, how many cities?
I don't know how many have them, but.
But there are some.
I do, I do in my house.
What?
I do in my house.
And did you pay for the second meter?
I did, but if there was a option, there's value to both arguments.
Right, but it paid, but you must.
It paid for itself in a few years. It absolutely did.
In a few years, it paid for itself, Mark. The fact is, why would you waste money when you don't need to waste it? It comes right down to a basic point.
Because it's accurate.
Fuck.
It's more accurate.
My God, you're working with an archaic system right now, and you're talking to me about being accurate. You can't tell them, you don't have any idea how much sewage you use.
I'm saying it's.
Do you? And you're an engineer. You're an engineer. You don't, I can tell you approximately what I'm using. I'm likely the only person in the whole town.
You have no idea in July, August, and September.
I'll tell you what.
How much of that, how much of those numbers are water?
I know these are not irrigation, Mark, and that's all I care about.
So, you know that there is no irrigation ever in the month of May?
Absolutely. No, I said these six months.
Okay.
I don't have my hoses turned out. It's not irrigation.
But what do you have in July, August, and September?
That's irrigation.
How much?
Whatever that pinpoint is showing. I could show you all my figures.
How much of those July, August, and September bars are, no, no, how much, Richard?
If you'll hush up, I'll tell you.
How much?
Anything above the three is automatically going to be irrigation. Or car washing or hosing down the garden. Because I am not going to take more showers. I'm not going to the bathroom anymore than I do year-round.
Hold on, you said anything above?
Anything above, whatever the average is on these.
No, 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 but in a given year, now you say that's averages of multiple years.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, but what, if that was a single year, okay?
Yeah.
Tell me in July, August, and September.
Oh, I don't have my back data. It's going to be somewhere, it's going to be below three. That's where my rate should be set.
But you can't tell me in July, August, and September.
Yeah, I can. I can tell you, anything above that average, Mark, is going to be sewage or it's going to be going into the ground. It's not going in sanitary sewage because there's nothing changes in my household.
Our semantics aren't working, Richard, because.
Apparently not.
In July, August, and September, for July, August, and September, I'll take your word, your sanitary sewer usage water, the water that goes, can be anywhere from here.
It's going to be average.
To here.
Yeah, it'll be average.
But, but in, but what's the number? Not what's the average, what's the number? Is it this from here to here, or is it this?
Let me ask you one more time. Folks at home, you can't even see this.
On an annual basis, it's a big deal.
I'm going to take these six months or five months, whatever, and they average them. And it's going to average in, just to gauge, it's going to be about two point seven five units. That is my basic sewage flow that I'm going to be billed every single month for twelve months. And then anything above that is going to be spiked in irrigation water. Then they reevaluate it at the next year.
Right, so you're using averages and subtracting actual water use from an average water use, correct?
Yeah, and I.
So, that is, in my phraseology, that is, I won't use the word approximation, it's a calculation.
Yeah, it's a very good calculation.
It's a calculation. My way is a measurement. That's the difference. And I, so I shouldn't use the word approximation because you take exception to that. I'll use the word, it's a calculation. So, your way you calculate it, my way you would measure it.
Well, the town isn't, but the town isn't going to, and a task force wouldn't calculate something that's going to put us at a disadvantage. I mean, they're going to look and say, well, you know, if we're within a couple of points, you know, as long as we are not tremendously undercharging people for their water use, then we're in the ballpark. And I think that, you know, if you have accurate numbers, you have a good plan, you can figure this out. I don't think it's, this is not like rocket science. And if we're a couple of gallons off, I think we're going to be fine.
Either way, both of those ideas are better than probably what you're doing now.
Yeah, the only other one is it puts a lot more infrastructure into it.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Richard, are you raising your hand for something?
Yes, sir.
You've got to get up with a.
Can I just bring it to you?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. We're going to move off this issue and get on to the next agenda.
Okay, yeah.
That's okay. I'll go up there. And this is out of the ordinary because we usually don't allow the residents to come up and speak after we've got our meeting going, Richard. So, make it short, please.
But I watched two people that know what they're talking about and are trying to hit a different place logically in each other's position, but it seems very, very simple. If you take the highest months of usage and you get the average of water used, and you take the average of the other months, and you take the difference, that amount that's the difference, you just don't charge during those high-usage months for the sewer for that period of time.
That's what they do.
Yeah.
It's called winter averaging, but we're going to move on. There's all kinds of ways to skin a rabbit, and I didn't want to get this elongated discussion going tonight. I think if we're going to do it, we at least need to get a task force together that looks at everything and looks across the board. I asked a couple of fairly simple questions for water usage, and I couldn't get the answers, which I thought would have been readily available, but.
But they weren't.
They weren't, and I was.
And not, and they weren't because we didn't feel like it. They weren't because of how our software collects and reports information. And it was, it would have been like going into each and every bill. But I will tell you that some years ago, rather than a task force, which will kind of give you what you pay for, a few years ago, we did have a rate case or a rate study.
Rate study, yeah.
A rate study done. Perhaps it's time to do that again.
Which rates?
The water, we had a water.
That was the Larry Star Committee. That's what raised this whole.
Right.
To have people claiming that we're going to charge three hundred and fifty dollars for minimum rates and all that crazy stuff, which was never even passed, but that's what's been thrown in our face from that rate study. That was the Larry Star Committee.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
I mean, I agree with you, and they consistently come back and said it ought to be fixed plus variable, but, you know, we've.
But the winter averaging thing has not been something that, did the previous rate study talk about winter averaging specifically?
It had nothing to do with sewers. It was.
Right, I mean, I think the thing is, there's going to be a redistribution of charge on the sewers if you do this, but perhaps a sewer rate charge specifically to address winter averaging is something that we could do.
It's bigger than we can do at this meeting anyway. It was just something I wanted to get out and get people thinking. There's more than one way to skin a cat. I'll send anybody here about seventy pages with the research. I download it on the subject if they'd like to read it. Let's, huh?
I loved, I really were excited.
From websites all across America.
I think it's.
Lifetime.
Please, share it with them, please.
I'll sanitize and see what, I just think I've still got the time. I'll share it.
He deserves it.
It's just what I'm doing. I read my meter, and I do this stuff all the time. Okay, I put an item on the agenda for open discussion. We are yearly.
And he reads in the shower during the months of June, July, August, and September. That's where he does his best work.
I just love those long showers in the middle of summer. Lifetime Achievement Award. We, folks, we have an award in our town. It's called Citizen of the Year Award. And it, this year, we started looking at our applications that came in for Citizen of the Year, and it struck me even stronger this year than last year that we need a more appropriate award for citizens that have contributed over a lifetime to our community. We gave a citizen last year, Citizen of the Year Award, that I believe had served on the Select Board for twelve or fifteen years and recycling commissions and just a long-term commitment to our community. And that we honored the individual with the Citizen of the Year Award, which to me is really nice, but it seems so highly inappropriate that we don't have a recognized award from the Select Board that we can, or from the town that we can present to our long-term serving citizens. And that's why I was proposing that our board entertain a motion to implement a new award along with the Citizen of the Year Award. We must keep that because it's very appropriate for things that take place during the year. But that we also come up and institute a Lifetime Achievement Award or any name we want on that, to give another special award that we can present to these citizens that are brought forth that have contributed years and years of time to our community. I mean, we had a gentleman here tonight, Jim Russell. He's been involved with this community for years and years and years. You heard him talking. And we have other people in the community. I mean, the list is a mile long. And I'll be honest with you, we could likely start having Employee, or Employee, or not Employee of the Year, Citizen of the Year Award. We'd never be able to get through them because there's too many of them. So, I think having two systems, it's likely highly appropriate. And actually, when you get down to the fact, Citizen of the Year means Citizen of the Year. Lifetime Achievement Award means Lifetime Achievement Award. We could put out five of them in one year if we wanted to. The fact that this community is recognizing the longstanding contributions of citizens. That's why I wanted to bring it forward to the board. That's why I wanted to bring it for the board. I don't know if you have the same feelings I do, but I, I feel fairly strongly committed that we, we should be honoring more people.
Ri- Richard, I, you know, I, I understand your comments. I think I, my history in the town goes back quite a way, and I, I think if you look in the town, you know, in, in Town Hall and the plaque that's on the wall near, near, you know, near our old Select Board Meeting Room there, I think what you're gonna find is that the Citizen of the Year Award is a Lifetime Achievement Award. I can't think of anybody from my tenure of living in the town for the last forty-two years or something like that, or forty years, that, that got this because of something they did in one year. I think the issue is that it's misnamed, as opposed to it's mis-presented. I think that people who get this award, get it from a, pardon the expression, but a body of work and a lifetime of, of contribution to the town, and not a s- a single, a, a single year, a year's effort. It's pretty meaningful to the people who receive it, I believe. I, I've seen it, their response, I've seen their family's response. And, and I think the uniqueness of it has a lot of impact on its, the way it's received. And, and I, I guess my, well, the more I think about this, I, I'm more likely to say, either keep the name and recognize for what it is, or change the name. But rather than start expanding it and giving it to multiple people, I think the uniqueness and the, and the quality of, of the award recipients. I mean, I go back to, you know, we gave it to Cliff Sundell for years and years on, of his work in the Park Department, and Harry Reynolds for years and years of his work and, and, and all that kinda stuff. It really is something that I think the uniqueness is important. I, I think at this point, I'm prepared to stick with what we have and recognize it as different from what it's called.
Well, I, I wish I could agree with you, but I can't, cause it's called Citizen of the Year. And it implies Citizen of the Year.
Then we ought to rename it, or.
Well, then, then we can rename it, but I think, I think we need, we will have valid cases of a Citizen of the Year. I, I, I put one in this year, and I'm not gonna say what I've done on camera, but, uh, I think it was a very valid indication of, here's somebody that did something pretty special this year that is not a Lifetime Achiever of, of these types of things in our community. Where, where the other ones, and I, I agree with you a thousand percent about the honor being bestowed, but I think it goes beyond Citizen of the Year. I think it goes to a Lifetime Achievement type award.
If I could come up with an example that'd, that'd help me clarify thinking about this? Cause I, I, I think you're, you're both correct, um, in what the, what the award currently is employed for, even if it is somewhat of a misnomer. Um, but if you had, Arlene Miller was the winner last year, was, was honored as Citizen of the Year. She didn't do anything in that year, um, any more different or outstanding than any of the other countless years that she has given tons of time and commitment and energy to the community. And so it was a rec- it was a recognition of many years of service, not something she did in two thousand fifteen, or fourteen. But hypothetically speaking, say, someone else, say there was Long Meadow resident serving the military and they won the, they, they won the Congressional Medal of Honor, the highest award for military service. And the board got two nominations, one for Arlene Miller, and one for someone who'd received the Congressional Medal of Honor for service in the military. I mean, God help you being in that position, I think the town should honor someone who's received the Congressional Medal of Honor in a given year, but not the expense of honoring someone who's also given of themselves for many, many years. And that's where, uh, when I think of that situation, it would be good to have another means of honoring someone who has done something, who's never volunteered on a board or committee in their entire existence in Long Meadow, but has done something truly unique and outstanding in a given year, while still being able to recognize the many, it will never run out of people, as, as you guys said, to honor, because the town is so full of people who are committed and involved and engaged. And so when, when we were talking about the agenda and putting this on, my first thought was, I'll be honest with you, you know, I don't see it. But then after hearing just briefly Richard's explanation, and then really thinking about the different ways where this could kind of come into, uh, an intersection point, I thought, you know, maybe it's worth, uh, thinking about a, a different type of award. And even if it's different, um, screening process or recommendations, or you, you name it after someone, so it's not Citizen of the Year and then Lifetime Achievement Award, or you, you know, you name it after, you know, the, the Stephen Williams Award, or something like that. Um, you know, I, I do think it would be nice, um, to have some, have another vehicle that can honor people in the community in a way that's different than how we do it. Cause you're right, Mark. When you do look at that roster of people who won, it's all Lifetime, it's all Lifetime Achievement Awards. Um, but we do have people who don't get involved a lot, but still do singular things during the year. And you may not award it every year. You may not, someone may not do something in a given year that rises to the level.
Yeah, and, and yet, to some degree, this, you know, what you're looking at is recognizing a year's worth of the Congressional Medal of Honor winner. You know, perhaps that's not necessarily a, an, an annual town meeting type award, but it's a Select Board acknowledge, recognition award of some kind for somebody who did something like won the Congressional Medal of Honor, or, you know, was the state champion in, in, in some sport, or what, whatever it is that the Select Board chooses to identify and honor specifically. And, and we can do that any ti- and, and I think we have at times done that throughout the year with a Select Board commendation. But my sense is that, you know, the history of the Citizen of the Year Award goes back some time and is a, a body of work. And, and I apologize, Richard, that the name doesn't reflect, you know, more that it is a body of work, but the experience, the history, and, and the past winners do, do represent that.
Yeah, and I think if you look at it as a Lifetime Achievement Award, uh, it almost sounds like the person's gonna retire, and, and I hope Arlene Miller isn't thinking of retiring.
And nobody's willing to have her retire.
So, I, I mean, I don't think we really necessarily have to change the name of, of the award, but I do think that, um, having, you know, like in some places, they give a key to the city or something, you know, where they say, okay, we wanna recognize your special achievement. Uh, you, you've made our town look great. We wanna give you a key to the city and, and, uh, so I think we could come up with, and you don't have to give it out every year. I think that it would be, uh, you know, I think that's a good idea, something to move towards. So where do we go? What do we do?
We need a motion?
What, a task force?
No. No, I, so. I mean, if the board finds no appetite, I.
I, I, I'd rather handle them one at a time, Richard, when somebody seems to, seems to beg for s- particular recognition for a, a unique ac- action or short-term, you know, contribution to the, the community, as opposed to what I perceive the Citizen of the Year Award at a town meeting has been. So I'm, I'm not sitting here saying we need to run out and do something. If there's somebody who we ought to recognize, then let's talk about recognizing them separately from that.
Well, let me s- I, I think, and I was only, I, it wasn't, was, I was only half in just about a task force. I think a, not that it merits further study, because I think on its face it makes sense to, to think about, but, um, since it is, since the bestowing of the award is an act of the legislative branch, and that's, and Mark, that's, for me, that's the difference between a proclamation by the Select Board versus this award gr- oh no, it's presented to me, to me, doesn't follow.
Yeah, presented, yeah.
Never mind.
Yeah, so it's our, it's our award one way or the other.
It's the Select Board's award. I forgot. My bad.
I think, I, I viewed it one hundred percent in the context that's been explained here. The fact is, Citizen of the Year Award means usually tied something that that citizen did that year, and they're being recognized.
But, but Richard, it really never has.
I, I understand. That's why I'm saying, I think we need two different things. I think we've misused the Citizen of the Year Award. It should have always been Lifetime Achievement Award, or, or Select Board, uh, Achievement of Excellence, or something like this that, that really said it wasn't just this year, cause you, your case at hand was perfect.
Somebody, somebody's gonna come up with semantics, Richard, that says, well, what it really meant was the, the citizen of Long Meadow who were recognizing that year, as opposed to the citizen of, you know, whatever it is.
Let me throw something out there then, Richard, um, and we don't need to bel- to belabor the point, but as we think about this, maybe for a future agenda item. I think, uh, we had a, a pro- um, we did honor, um, a couple here because of a house fire. We presented them with a certificate, and we've done that in the past. If someone does something, we present a certificate. Um, perhaps, you know, annually consolidating all those things that we bestowed on others and making a presentation at town meeting, so it gets, presents the entire legislative branch like the Citizen of the Year Award does. Maybe that's, maybe it's a present, maybe it's a presentation issue.
Or maybe it's just an acknowledgement and repeat of it at, 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 you know, and, and in that case, there was a timeliness to what we did. But to, to go back at the annual town meeting and say, you know, during the year, the Select Board recognized, you know, Stephen Crane for, you know, taking the cat out of the tree, and, and Mario Maza for winning the Congressional Medal of Honor, you know, has some value of renewing that fact and doing it that way. Still separate from what has generally been a Citizen of the Year Award awarded to somebody who didn't know it was coming when they showed up to town meeting that night.
Okay, anyway, we have any subcommittee reports tonight? None of them subcommittees? Uh, okay, we're going to, uh, we're, ladies and gentlemen, we're getting ready to adjourn. We're gonna be going into executive session. We have some business to take care of. Uh, we'll go for roll call, for roll.
I move, we move into executive session.
I'll second it.
And I'm not even sure what the executive, for approval of minutes.
What we're gonna do, we're gonna do the voting of Citizen of the Year.
Okay.
Alright.
Okay.
I second it?
Roll call.
Yeah, roll call, Tom.
In roll call, yes, I'm gonna.
Rich, yes.
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, I hope you, I hope you enjoyed it as much as I did tonight, and we'll, um, we'll see you here in two more weeks. And remember, we have the town meeting coming up on May tenth, and it will be, there's, you've likely read the warrants, there's gonna be a lot of exciting conversations taking place that evening. So we look forward to seeing you, and we appreciate your watches tonight. Have a nice evening.